Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our first meeting of 2019. Happy New Year. We're going to start with our traditional moment of silence, and we would be remiss, we lost a couple of folks very near and dear to many of us, especially Robbie Skinner, Tappy Squires, who passed on New Year's Eve, and then just yesterday, a longtime custodian at the high school, many of us were acquainted with, Carmick Pugh, died suddenly of a heart attack. We'd also be remiss if we didn't observe that yesterday marked the 13th anniversary of the horrific tragedy at Segow. And I ask you that you continue to keep the families of the lost miners and Randall McCloy in our best thoughts, wishes, and prayers this evening. Thank you very much. And since he's already standing, our excellent Fire Chief JB Kimball will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief Kimball is asked to make -- electricity's going off already. He's asked to make a couple of remarks concerning the capacity for this room. And as we get closer to discussion and comments on the ordinance, we may have some of you come back, but we can't have 75 people in a room that the Fire Marshal says we are maxed out at with 49. So Chief Kimball, you want us offering the comments?
Like you said, occupancy of this room is 49. We can put people in the hallway and out on the stoop, but you have to leave the exit open. That's fire code for state Fire Marshal. So 49 is the max. So if you're here for nonessential reasons, or you can come back in later, all city, like myself, I'm going to step out until it's my turn to speak for my event tonight. That'll allow somebody else to come in. I know Jerry Arnold and some other city employees are out there, but 49 is our max.
Can some of them steps go out there?
I'd mention that. I meant, there's stuff in there. I'd rather than go through the hallway and outside, and then when the time comes to speak, maybe some people can swap in and out. If you're with groups, you know, if you have a speaker for a group and you've got 10 people with you, you can take a couple outside until we get to 49. So we're at about 60-some.
We'll pause for a couple minutes till we figure this out.
Yeah, I'll step out.
I'll raise my hand first, Mayor.
Oh, geez.
I couldn't make it easy. 20's big and true.
Yeah. So right now, we're at the point where almost that whole wall, unless we can swap in and out a few. So you can come back in, like I said, when that time comes, but some people will have to rotate in and out as people speak.
There's a seat here, and one back here. There's some chairs here.
I didn't count myself, so I need three more people. If one of the news guys could leave, I don't think it takes two to run to camera. Okay. And that'll leave two more that need to step up. That doesn't include me.
That's what I said. I said no.
Two more. You can come back in. Thank you all. Sorry for the inconvenience. I'll step out.
Thanks, Chief. All right, the first thing tonight, I never realized, the first two years I did this, it wasn't as popular as it was tonight, is the State of the City address that I'd like to deliver. The beginning of our new year poses a timely opportunity for us to look ahead, to consider our future. I continue to believe that our community is excellently postured to further raise the bar on our quality of life here for all of our residents. Please indulge me for the next few minutes as I share our plans and vision municipal department by department for 2019. Our utility and public safety operations shall always be the core of our essential services. Our Waste Collection Board launched its new toter system last spring, and about 60% of our customers throughout Upsher County have now received their new toters. We've already realized greater efficiency, improved employee safety, and all residents and businesses alike are more fully accountable for the services provided to them, which helps to save us all money. As I reported last year, in combination with our Streets and Parks Department, we very soon need to realize construction of a new welding garage and tool building at our mud lick run facility. Jerry Arnold will share details in the months ahead, but we know that there will be a cost association of several hundred thousand dollars with that project that will be shared by Waste Collection and our general fund. We need to continue to invest in and be good stewards of the physical plants of all of our facilities. I note that there has not been a rate increase in waste collection here since 2011, and in this age, to see the rates of any service remain the same for eight years is almost unheard of. Jeff Wamsley's guys continue to perform in exemplary fashion. Our Water Board experienced a very busy 2018. The new Victoria Hill water tank was brought online, and our water storage system now has more potable water than ever before. Completion of the decommissioning of the St. Joseph's tank will follow soon. The increase in our reserve water supply is all part of the anticipated future growth in our community associated with the ever nearing completion of Corridor H. Our cooperative arrangement with Dominion Resources and the construction of the Atlantic Coast Pipeline Project resulted in the undertaking of more than $2 million worth of improvements to our water distribution system, with the cost being borne entirely by ACP. These improvements would have been undertaken in the future in-house, with the cost being borne by our residents and businesses, so completion of this project pushes us years ahead, as our waterworks distribution system has been greatly enhanced without having to increase fees. Currently, and as of January 1, Buckcannon ranks 39th out of the 369 Public Service Commission regulated water utilities in the state of West Virginia. That means we provide our water services among the most affordable communities in all of West Virginia and are at the 10.5% lowest rates in our entire state. The water plant work completed in 2018 was beneficial, but at the same time problematic. When I was coming aboard as mayor nearly three years ago, the rhetoric about the $2 million worth of improvements to our plant suggested we would add decades of service to our Harlier Brown Water Plant, and thus we were deferring tens of millions of dollars in plant replacement costs for many, many years. Now, our current consulting engineers are suggesting our water plant has another decade or so of life expectancy. We're flummoxed about this evaluation, and our Water Board and city administration will work hard to better evaluate the status of our current plant during 2019. We will be entirely proactive on this matter and will not kick the can down the road. We will be working closely with the Adrian Public Service District to realize additional improvements to the southern portion of our water distribution system. We will continue to insist that all of the outlined public service districts improve their maintenance programs with their own systems to minimize the potable water that ends up being dumped into the ground. The leaky drates of some of the PSDs is untenable, and we must all work to being better stewards of our precious water. City Engineer Jay Holland is working to identify ways to increase our raw water storage that might double for some form of water recreation. Stay tuned. Water Superintendent Kelly Arnold's staff is performing outstandingly. We welcomed a couple of new plant operators during 2018, and they're doing a super job. On the whole, our waterworks have never been better positioned than they are right now. By the way, Buckcannon's water was judged to be the best, or tied for the best tasting water, in all of West Virginia for the past two years. Our Sanitary Board continues to function in an exemplary manner. Opened in 1987 with a then 30- to 40-year life expectancy, Engineer Sam Ludlow and new sanitary superintendent Buck Samples now estimate that in 2019, our Samuel S. Ludlow Sewer Plant should endure for another 40 years, given the excellent and persistent upgrades and maintenance of our existing physical plant operations, all again undertaken in-house. Sam and Buck together have a city tenure exceeding 70 years. Currently, as of January 1, and following rate increases during the past two years, Buckcannon ranks 173rd out of 321 PSC regulated sewer utilities in the state of West Virginia. That means our sewer services rank in the middle of the pack in affordability in West Virginia, and are at the 53.9% lowest rates in our state. Remember, during 2017, and after decades of discussion, all storm sewer operations were formally designated as being undertaken by our Sanitary Board. Our sewer staff has been engaged in extensive planning within and outside the corporate limits to improve our storm water system, and with passage of the sales tax ordinance that will be implemented in the months ahead, we anticipate great strides in further improving our storm water system as funding becomes available. I would be remiss if I failed to note that all of our utility operations are now in compliance with state mandates to maintain a 12.5% reserve based upon a state operational revenues formula. We are now universally prepared for emergencies as they arise. In Streets and Parks, there are a number of projects identified for 2019. Many more paving and sidewalk projects are planned, including near the city's seal mural, Canal Spring and Florida Streets. The Gateway West Project will start in the spring, and soon there will be an amazing mile of new sidewalk, period lighting, holiday banners, and complete streets from the first Buckcannon exit all the way to our college campus. We anticipate the state project improving 88 sidewalk intersect points downtown and all along Route 20 and Canal Street to be completed during the upcoming construction season. This will greatly enhance ADA compliance throughout our community, and particularly in the highest pedestrian traffic areas. Our North Buckcannon area will soon realize important improvements, including sidewalk projects along North Florida Street, First Street, and Morton Avenue. The North Buckcannon Park was rededicated last spring with handicap accessible parking, enhanced ADA compliance, and new playground equipment. Jawbone Park realized new improvements last year, and soon a new sound system will be installed. The long discussed Trader's Alley Milkman Lane project is nearing completion, and we hope to dedicate it this summer, connecting our beautiful downtown to our primary community gathering spot in Jawbone Park. We'll soon dedicate the new Green Park, Bobcat, and Best benches. Our River Trail will be further enhanced with construction of a new pavilion located near the boat ramp and the dog park, and this past summer, we dedicated the Poundstone Ellis Legacies Plaza. The Dog Park itself will continue to be developed by our excellent city crews, with support funding coming from the volunteers comprising our Dog Park Committee. We look forward to at long last realizing our handicapped fishing pier. We will work with our cycling friends and extend our River Trail to our high school and beyond to Segow and Pringle Tree Park. We are working out details right now with West Virginia's Flit Rail to connect the dots between our downtown and the Wesleyan campus portion of our River Trail. We resumed cemetery mowing in-house in 2017, saving our residents thousands of dollars annually while employing new seasonal workers. Grants have permitted us to make tremendous strides in the rehabilitation of the Colonial Theater. We have now secured about half of our funding for this four-phase project. We have a new floor that can sustain 200 tons of weight, a new roof has been installed, the restored marquee is backed up, the windows have been rehabbed, and our guys are working on the balcony and lobby areas of our theater right now. We anticipate Buckcannon Community Theater performing Dracula in a renovated auditorium in October. This facility will be a crown jewel of our community when completed, servicing our arts entities, but especially our youth. Speaking of our youth, we will celebrate the silver anniversary of our Stockard Youth and Community Center in 2019. We plan on breaking ground on our new auditorium gymnasium complex in 2019, and many more fundraisings are planned as we try to edge closer to undertaking that vital project for the benefit of our kids. We raised $110,000 with our renewed SYCC Capital Campaign during the past year alone. Rob Barber and his crew continue to work their magic with our floral and landscaping program. The entrances to town are receiving some much-needed sprucing up, replete with new plantings and lighting. We realized community's fruit orchards and vegetable gardens during the 2018 growing season. We're going to further expand our wildflower program in 2019. Brad Hawkins's guys simply amaze us. We simply could not employ a better public works director than Jerry Arnold. Our Police Department welcomed two new members in 2018, with the hire of Angel McCully and Sam Kramer, who completed their academy training just last month. We're starting 2019 with a new testing to replenish our list of eligibles and will soon replace an officer who resigned in December. Our officers are unanimously committed to Kalia accreditation, and the Kalia Committee has been very busy. We continue to develop holistic policies in addressing our drug epidemic. Kudos to Matt Gregory's excellent officers and staff, and special thanks to our VIPs as well, protecting our lives and property. Our Fire Department similarly worked hard on its own IFAA accreditation efforts during 2018, and all of our members are performing excellently, including new chief JB Kimball. The collaboration among our paid and volunteer firefighters continues to establish Buckcannon as one of the best-prepared fire departments in the state. Our guys need a new rescue pumper trucks in, and the council needs to prepare for helping them purchase that new vehicle in 2019. This vehicle will permit us to retire two or three 1990's vehicles from our fire fleet. We anticipate partnering with the county commission and our volunteers to realize the necessary funds, but this new, fully-equipped vehicle is expected to cost about $500,000. Thanks to all of our paid and volunteer firefighters for their selfless time and commitment to protecting our lives and property. We still plan on completing the exterior improvements to the public safety complex with new lighting, reconfigured parking spaces, landscaping, and dedication of the new Police Department Blue Wall in 2019 to complement the Fire Department's Red Wall dedicated during Friendly Way Day in 2017. Our community scrapbook wall will come to be dedicated in the frequently-used community and training room, which by the way, needs a few more tables and chairs, but we did acquire several new chairs for this much-used room, along with an additional TV monitor. Callie Cronin-Sams has made us vastly better at information sharing, while she has aided us reaping many more grants awards than ever before. Ambie Jenkins, our Finance and Administration Director, continues to perform yeoman's work for us, and our city hall staff has never been stronger than it is right now. We thank city attorney Tom O'Neil, Assistant City Attorney Matt Himes, and our Municipal Court Judge Helen Eckert for their excellent service. 2018 saw Harbor Freight locate its second West Virginia store right here within our corporate limits. Stone Tower Brews opened last April. The Innovation Center broke ground during 2018 and anticipates opening by summer. The Opera House opened this past summer and hosted the West Virginia Municipal League, receiving rave reviews from mayors and councilors from all over West Virginia. Community Care opened its new doors downtown. Orion Strategies located its corporate headquarters downtown. Citizens Bank is open for business in its new building. Jester Line is prepared to bring new virtual reality gaming to our downtown in the coming days. Almost Heaven CrossFit Gym opened, adding vibrancy to our Trader's Alley Arts District. Mountain Lakes Insurance is now downtown, and developers from throughout the region continue to invest substantially in our downtown. In fact, we've realized more than $15 million in new construction in our downtown during the past two years. We have virtually 100% storefront occupancy on our Main Street. Very soon, we'll welcome Buteras to downtown, along with Mama Mia's Pie and Pasta. Travis Foster has become an excellent partner in our downtown developments. We'll continue to partner with businesses, big and small, seeking to expand or establish their enterprises in beautiful downtown Buckcannon. We'll continue to work closely with our wonderful friends and former protectors, the members of our American Legion and VFW on various projects, including plans to develop the Veterans Way Loop on Canal Street and expand the Flags for the Fallen project. We'll partner with the West Virginia Strawberry Festival to again help stage the most successful festival in all of West Virginia. It's the single most important event each year in our community, and it's an opportunity to show off what we do for the entire region. We'll continue to work closely with Create Buckcannon, Art 26201, Buckcannon Community Theater, Buckcannon Choral Society, and all arts-related groups to expand public arts in all forms, visual and performing. Our primary partners will benefit from our collaboration. West Virginia Wesleyan College, St. Joseph's Hospital, the Upsher County Commission, the Upsher County School System, the CVB, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Development Authority. We'll continue to support small business through our facade grants program. We'll continue to help clean up properties through our Good Neighbor Grant Program, helping those who need it most. Our new parking policy has been fully affected and has helped spur activity in our downtown. We will continue to honor and support the Blessing Box and the Little Free Library Programs and the excellent volunteers that make those programs so successful and which distinguish Buckcannon from all other places. Speaking of volunteers, how about that new volunteer center and the super work of Casey Gilbert? Our inaugural Community Unity and Kindness Day was a huge success in October, and we look forward to many more Best Awards, that is, Buckcannon's exemplary service testimonials. We've already recognized Amanda Hayes, Zach Mutsler, Robin Keough, and next meeting, Shirley Tinney. We will continue to partner with Matt Turner and Opportunity House to remove the stigma of addiction while creating a welcoming environment for those in recovery. We'll partner in the Third Annual HAWHAW Hope and Help Assembly in September, followed by our Children's Festival, Truck Fest, Fall Fest, and all of our Halloween and Christmas fun. Festival Fridays are already scheduled for a full summer of 2019 season. We'll continue to collaborate with the River Festival Group as they celebrate our community's water supply late next summer. Our reconstituted Planning Commission has been performing yeoman's work to develop our 2025 comprehensive plan. The newly-formed Diversity Appreciation Coalition will continue to perform important work to expand our all-inclusiveness, and will be announcing very soon how we will celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King Day later this month. We'll continue to recognize our history and to tell our story, and to recognize those who brought positive attention and accolades to our BU community, soon recognizing J.D. Hinkle Jr., Charlie Harper, Steve Koontz, Jane Anne Phillips, Breece Dejean Pancake, our state's longest-recognized poet laureate Irene McKinney, Earl Greasy Neal, Cliff Battles, the Carter Sisters, and others. We will do all these things while being cleaner, greener, and more sustainable than ever before. We will do all these things while being more inclusive than ever before. We shall not tolerate the actions of those who seek to divide us. Anyone, regardless as to their race, ethnicity, gender, religion, age, handicap, or orientation who seeks to be part of our many successes, is invited to participate with us and to offer their help in making our community even better. Our mission is not to be the best community around. Our mission is simply to be the best community that we can be. I have no doubt that with our excellent staff of 85 full-time employees, that we shall take our community to another higher level during 2019. Our outstanding employees make all of these things possible. As we begin the budgeting process for the 2019-20 fiscal year next month, and recalling my commitment to our employees that this council honored back in October of 2016 by then approving a 50-cent hour pay raise for all full-time employees, I ask us to work together, that is, the city council and our utility boards, to find the means to implement an additional modest cost of living increase effective during 2019 of an additional 50 cents an hour for all full-time employees. Our success as a city is attributed to our folks in the trenches, who are repairing broken utility lines at 3:00 a.m. when it's below zero, our first responders, who answer the police and fire calls at all hours and under the most unpleasant of circumstances, our workers who are hanging off of the back of our garbage trucks when it's zero or 95 degrees. We need to recognize the value of those labors, and we need to retain and express our collective appreciation for our very valuable workforce. I want to most sincerely thank my colleagues on this city council, who have steadfastly sponsored and supported initiatives to make our organization and community stronger. We truly are, all in this together. May 2019 smile kindly and fondly upon our Buckcannon. Our only guest of the evening was to be Samantha Woody. Samantha and her husband Ron have been renovating the Buckcannon Bowling Alley, and Ron sustained a very nasty hand and arm injury while working on the bowling alley. So she's going to try to be here, maybe with Ron at the next meeting, so we don't have any guests on the agenda. I think everybody else that's signed up to attend wishes to speak about the ordinance that we'll take up here shortly. If I've misspoken about that, if there's anybody that wants to talk about anything else other than the ordinance, I'd be happy to recognize it. Is there anybody here to speak on any other issue? Okay. That takes us down to our department and board reports, and first up is our Information Coordinator, Grand Researcher Writer, Callie Cronin-Sams. Callie?
Hello.
How are you?
My report is in your packet, as it usually is. Looks a little different today. Typically have the Google Analytics and Facebook information for the past few weeks, but with this being the first meeting of the year, I just have a little overview of the year in general. And also, I didn't change the date there at the top. It still says December 20th, and of course, it's the 1st or the 3rd of January, so apologize for that. But starting with the website and our social media this year, we've seen an increase in the city's website traffic, especially when it's linked to a story on our city's Facebook page. And we plan to build on the success in 2019 by adding Twitter and Instagram with the help of our Wesleyan Service Scholar, Elizabeth Stover. We have also embedded Google Maps into the parks and recreation and historic parks of the website, while also correcting and improving, improving Google Maps in general to include the proper street names and facility names where I've found that they've been labeled incorrectly sometimes. We've also installed Google Analytics into the website, so we can track how many visitors we have on our website, which pages they look at, how long they stay on each page. We can also tell how they came to our site, whether it was from a search, or where they, if they've been directed from a Facebook post or from the county's website. Seems like we get some traffic where they're, they've linked from the county's website. So it's all good information to have, so we know how they're using our website and how we can better reach people. On Facebook, just by quarterly, we did in the first quarter, 51 posts, second quarter, 62, third quarter, 73, and the fourth quarter, 87, for a total of 273 for the year. And as you can tell, that continued to grow, and we hope to continue to increase those as we go along, and also add the Twitter and Instagram as well, so we can reach more people that way. In our current public relations, you saw today maybe that the news about the Warehouser grant of $10,000. We had a nice photo opportunity with them, with the after-school children at Stockard today, at the Giving Tree and the foyer there. today at the Giving Tree and the foyer there, so that went out with a little news article. We also had some information and reminders about the 2025 planning process and the survey that's currently on the website, so we encourage everybody to go to the website. There's a button right on the homepage to get right to the survey and tell us how you feel about the city's direction and what you'd like to see prioritized. We also have paper surveys right here at City Hall, and those will be distributed to additional locations tomorrow, so those will be at the county courthouse and the library, both libraries and other places around town. On the 14th of January is the Town Hall for that, the planning commission's Town Hall. We also have information up on the LED sign right now about the 2025 survey Town Hall and also about the upcoming school levy election. Grant's been working on a form for the department supervisors so we can kind of review what their goals are for the year, and I can be looking at funding opportunities for those and making some priorities for the year. Casey's doing a great job at the Volunteer Centers, continued to work with Stockert and the Diversity Coalition, the planned events for MLK Junior Day of Service Weekend, and also the speed dating style event for February, connecting volunteers with different service organizations throughout the area. And also, we still encourage everyone to sign up for the Volunteer Center's newsletter, so please do that if you haven't already. We're also working with the Fire and Police Departments for February's Heart Health Month and providing some CPR training to VIPs and other volunteers through the grant funding that we receive for the Volunteer Center. For upcoming grants, we're looking at the Safeway Fire Grant, it would be in March that we would need to take action on that. Working on the city snapshot for the People for Bikes to improve our bikeability and walkability score, and just looking to see what else is available coming up this year. For 2018, the total dollar amount we applied for was, or at least out of grant applications that I worked on, to be clear, so there were already some in progress with Colonial Theater and the Warehouser grant that Deborah had worked on with Stockert. Those were separate from the numbers that you'll hear now. But for those grants that I had worked on as well, we applied for over 2.2 million. A big portion of that, of course, was the AML pilot, which we were disappointed that we did not receive that. Out of the other 456,000 that we applied for, we received 295,508. So pretty pleased with that success rate for this year and hope to continue that in 2019. That was, in numbers of grants, five out of eight. So when we had the Volunteer Center put on, the Grant Writing Workshop, our Wesleyans Grant Writer was happy to share that generally one in five is considered good, so I was happy to get that five out of eight for this year. I have the Google Sheets documents that I think perhaps at the beginning of last year sent everybody invitations from council and all the departmental supervisors so you can see more detail, both on ones we've already applied for or looked at but decided not to apply for, as well as ones we're currently looking at and their due dates, that sort of thing. So be happy to share those with you again. If you don't currently have access to that, or just come to me in my office and I can help you find that information that way. Upcoming events, we already talked about the 2025 Community Input Meeting and the school levy election on the 19th and MLK. And also in your packet, I just have a visual of what's on the LED screen currently in our slot, so if you're interested in seeing that. Do you have any questions? Sorry, that was maybe a little longer than usual.
Council, questions for Callie? You mentioned the $1.8 million grant with the Abandoned Mines Program. Well, it's momentarily disappointing.
Yes.
We've been given some, don't want to use too strong of words, but some reassurance that upon reaplication and a little tweak here and there, that we would probably be more favorably considered.
And then also learn that two, we were in Northern County for the grant announcement, the two that were awarded had previously applied and then were asked to reapply after making some changes, so there may be hope.
The powers that be specifically solicited are reaplication.
That's true, yes.
So that could be a good sign.
Yeah.
I'm just being optimistic.
So what we've been saying for the last 10 years about hiring a grant writer and establishing relationships with these grant funding opportunities, may not get it the first time, but the second or third, or you're invited, and pays dividends, so congratulations.
But just to be clear, in each case, it's been a team effort where I'm working with either members of council yourselves or departmental supervisors, or certainly Ambien combination, so it's always a team effort.
Well, the better part of $300,000 in the first year is nothing to stop that, so don't be too modest.
Yes.
Thanks, Callie. Any other questions or comments for Callie? Thanks, Callie. Next up is our Public Works Director, Jerry Arnold.
Hi, Jerry.
Good evening. I like this just appearance.
Oh, no.
Pretty cool, it just popped in.
And disappear.
Well, the biggest crowd we've had, and I've got the shortest report.
They're probably happy about that.
I can read the State of the City address.
I'll get through it very quickly. I've completed the employee information needed for the department to conduct their employee performance evaluations. Asked that all evaluation be completed by the end of January. The Water Department, the Water Department Area Warning Monitoring System, Phase One, the site has been cleared and the building's completed. They haven't set the building yet, but it has been constructed. Sewer Department Crew One is working on the Brush and Fork Extension. They've laid about 200 feet of pipe so far. Crew Two's installed roof drain into the storm sewer to plant and repaired the sewer line on 27 Mark Avenue. The Maintenance Crew's repairing the blower to plant, and the Plant Crew's performing normal maintenance. Waste Department has been routine activity. Street Department, we've had a couple employees off with medical issues, and the crew worked on cleanup of the storage yard last week. We were kind of shorthanded with the holidays, so they worked on that in-house. They've removed the Main Street holiday decor and currently working on replacing the wiring for the streetlights on the courthouse block. And since I submitted my report for Tracy to put in the packet, we have traced out the problem, and Councilman Skinner knows because he is...
Sending you text messages at 9 o'clock at night. Jerry, the lights are out.
When the lights are out. We have had problems with those three lights on the courthouse block now for over a month. We had a short, we thought we had it fixed, we didn't. Long story short, we traced it back to the construction site up there on Main Street, and they have got into our conduit, so we know where it's at, we'll be able to make the repair, and we'll be meeting with the site supervisor tomorrow about the issue. It wasn't as much that it was got into, but it was covered back up, and that caused us an awful lot of problems over the last month or so, but just so you know, we found it, we'll fix it. That's all I have, once you all have questions.
Questions for Jerry Arnold.
Jerry, you have any insight into why the longevity of the water plant repairs were kind of different than they were when we first did the project?
CJ, I think that the, and again hindsight's quick, I think that the material chosen for the repair was not the appropriate material. I think money would be what it would have been.
So aluminum instead of stainless steel or something like that?
It's more of a fiberglass liner instead of a paint-on coating. But again, as I said, we've been working, Jerry and I've been looking at different options of things that... And again, you know, it's not something that's doom and gloom. I don't want that picture to be painted of our water plant. We have a very good water plant that's been very well-maintained over the years. We have some issues with the seven bases, essentially. The plant itself is in pretty good shape for the long-term service, but that's, like I said, there's some options we're looking at, and we'll come back there. We're going to make some coating repairs, of course, this summer on that coating system that they use. So again, I don't know that, you know, the original projection of whatever, 20, 30 years, whatever it was at that time, and now from our engineer in 15 years, I don't know that that's just an educated guess. We need to have a little more conversation with them and explore all of them, so. I wouldn't put a whole lot of sleepless mites into this right at the moment. We don't have all the particulars.
Thank you.
Other questions, Jerry, all right?
Nope.
Oh, I thought you had. Anybody else have anything for Jerry? Thanks, Jerry. To all the guys, we appreciate it. You can send Ambien if you want.
I'll pack Ambien.
Hi, Ambien.
Hi.
What can you tell us about our pocket?
Now, I'm going to bore you with numbers, so bear with me. I'll be short. I'll try not to be too long. Okay, so I'm going to give you the general fund and money market checking, different accounts for December 31st, 2018. General Fund Money Market Checking, 621,432. General Fund CB, 83,704. The Municipal Stabilization Fund had 511,196. Coal Tax Checking had 38,263. The Stockert Youth Center Capital Campaign is at 235,738, but we just received a $10,000 check, and Mr. Thomas donated 12,000, so that will bring it up to 257,738 for the Stockert's Capital Campaign Fund. Revenues for December were 181,960, and the expenses were 287,57. Expenses to note was 2,269 for flooring at the Fire Department, 4,515 for guardrails on Upper Drive, 4,851 for the CPA to help close out books, and we had to replace the heat exchanger at City Hall for the downstairs unit. We're currently working on the end-of-year reports for payroll and 1099s, and I'm working on a general fund budget revision that you'll be presented to you at the next meeting. We're getting ready to send out information, once we balance all the books for the 31st, to general fund supervisors, that's the Fire Department, Police Department, Street Department, Stockert Youth Center, to begin the budget sessions for 2019-20. So we'll be coming back to you, asking when you want to set up those working sessions. I also drafted an RFP to distribute to online auction vendors, seeking their assistance so the city and the utility departments can sell their equipment that's no longer of use. As you recall, that's part of the Plank of the Home Rule ordinances program. Once I get the RFPs back, I'm going to come back to city council and ask them for approval, plus a list of equipment that needs to be sold online. I've conducted the interviews for Parking Enforcement Clerical Position and very near hiring for that. And also, just as a note, and this might be a bummer to everyone, the fuel surcharge will go down from 5.72% to 4.96% with all the bills coming out in January.
Anything jump out at you out of the ordinary, the expenditures or revenues for December?
Just those things I gave you, that, you know, have the flooring and the guardrails and...
So the fuel surcharge is what's on our...
Waste bills, garbage bills. The percentage of that for the fuel.
The trade-off is, is we're also paying less for gasoline.
That's right.
It's a way that the state legitimizes getting around tariff applications. Every time you try to get a little more money for gas going up or having to drop it because gas goes down, they just enter an administrative order and say, hey, the first of next month, you can do this. It's pretty much the way it works. Other questions or comments?
Happy New Year.
Thanks, Ambien. To all the gals out front, we appreciate them as well. Next up is our Fire Chief, JB Kimble. Hi, JB.
Happy New Year.
Been a long time since we saw it.
Yeah.
You know, with your remarks, it's been a while.
I'll be quick. You're in, well, I'll finish with the December calls. We responded to 102 calls for service in December. That's down from 117 last month and 148 the month before. We ended the year with 1,240 calls for service. That is a record, well above what our previous record was. You can look in your packet, there is a breakdown of what types of calls, and I won't elaborate on that unless you're able to. Going on, we have some classes coming up, a lot of classes coming up this month and in February. We have a core rescue class, which is a requirement to move on to the technician level in the rescue, rescues and extractions. So we have some of our paid volunteer members that take that. We have an Instructor 1 and 2 course coming up, some of our senior members and a couple of our younger members that take that class. Lieutenant Will Davis will be attending a quality improvement through accreditation class in Beaver Creek, Ohio, the middle of the month. Will be gone for three days. We're going up to venture into a nice class, a good setting, come back, and that way we can help Joey more than we already are, since he's our accreditation manager. I've spoken with Callie, you know, in March, we're going to be looking at the SAFER Grant. I spoke about it last year, this, in March. We need a little more detail on it. It is a federal grant to, I spoke, 64% of the time, we have three people on our first engine. If we could get a SAFER Grant and get one more person per shift, we would meet the gold standard in the fire service of having four on an engine, 64% of the time, which is huge for a community of our size. It is a 75%, 75%, 35% grant. It goes every three years, and it would be a perfect time to, if we got the process going, to enhance into maybe some advanced life support classes and stuff like that with new firefighters. We've expanded more into our own medical licensure. We have, we're looking at a medical director at this time. Like I spoke last month, it's, it's going to cost very little to move into that. That way, we have our own training, we have our own records, we don't rely on some other organization to take care of that for us. It just streamlines everything for us, so we are looking at that, and that's all I have.
We're going to bring you back in a few minutes to discuss our extra. Questions for JB relative to his monthly...
Not really a question, but, you know, talking about the SAFER Grant, or the, sorry, the grant.
SAFER.
SAFER, yes, SAFER, okay. Initially, last year, this was brought up, and several of us on council, myself included, had some reservations or concerns about it because of the timeframe that was proposed, but as we, I hope that we do move down the road to do this, because I think it could be beneficial to us as we continue to look at emergency medical services in the city limits and in the first due with the changes going on at St. Joseph's Hospital relative to transports and the EMS service that's in our county right now. So I hope that we do this. I hope that we consider it, so.
Fully noted. You're going to give us more information in the next meeting or two if you would care?
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, JB. Next up is our City Attorney, Tom O'Neil, but Tom's not here. He went to some big retreat with Orion Strategies, so we'll wait and catch up with him at the next meeting. Under Correspondence and Information, you have a couple of things in your packet. You have the revised 2019 city holiday schedule. You'll recall that the council, at the last meeting, added a half-day holiday for Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve in December of 2019, so that's reflected in that, and also the thank you letter that I did to Warehouser after their very gracious $10,000 gift. Under the Consent Agenda, there's three items I would ask for your approval on. The approval of the minutes from our last regular meeting of December 20th, 2018, the approval of our building and wiring permits, and the approval of the payment of our general And also, the thank you letter that I did to Warehouser after their very gracious $10,000 gift. Under the consent agenda, there's three items I'd ask for your approval on. The approval of the minutes from our last regular meeting of December 20th, 2018, the approval of our building and wiring permits, and the approval of the payment of our general fund bills. I would entertain a motion that we approve our consent agenda.
Same thing.
I have a motion by Mrs. Albaugh and a second by Mr. Skinner. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Minutes reflect the motion passes. Strategic issues. F1, we need Chief Kimball again. J B? He took a nap on us.
Should we stay up here?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Welcome back.
Yeah.
So we're talking about this rank structure.
Yes, sir. I met with the civil service and explained it. They went over that we're creating advancement for beginners always to the top level, standardizing both our volunteer organization and our pay ranks. And they report the job descriptions for, you know, as time goes on, of course, as we take on more services and stuff like that, the job descriptions will have to be enhanced also. But everything was very kosher with civil service. I spoke with Ambie, and we've ordered the promotional things, and we're looking at the cost of the books right now, so.
And J B, Tom O'Neil has also reviewed this, is that the case?
Yes, yes.
So just to remind the council about this process, the state code requires any change in rank structure to be considered by the city council and referred to the Fire Civil Service Commission for evaluation. And then they make recommendations that come back to the city council for possible adoption. So we've done all of those things, per state code, and now it's back in the council's lap. Ambie is good with it, Tom O'Neil is good with it, council has previously expressed their being good with it. I would entertain a motion that we approve this new rank structure.
Some moves.
I think I heard Rieger first and Skinner second. So I have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
No.
Oh, okay.
She just thumbs up.
She just thumbs up. She's giving me a lot of those thumbs up. I think she wants to talk.
My hands twitching.
Hearing of the need for no further discussion, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, J B. All the guys, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Be safe. Next up is some information regarding our sales tax ordinance. Tom was going to tell us about it, but it's in the packet, the latest information, as best I understand this. I think he mentioned this at the December 20th meeting. He had been optimistic that the State Tax Department would entertain the sales tax ordinance simultaneously with the State Home Rule Board's review of it. In the 11th hour in December, the State Tax Department says, no, we're not going to even start to take a peek at this until Home Rule Board approves it. So Home Rule Board meets, I believe, at the end of next week or the first of the week following, in advance of our next regular council meeting of January 17. As soon as Home Rule Board gives a thumbs up, Tom will expedite the process with the State Tax Department, and we are still hopeful and optimistic that we'll be able to fully implement the new ordinance July 1. So you know what I mean. It takes us down to F3, which is the first reading on ordinance 434, Buchanan's nondiscrimination ordinance. And again, since Tom is out with the Orion Strategies Group, I'm going to read this by caption, go through the whereas paragraphs, and tell you what the various of the seven, eight articles stand for, and then we'll discuss the ordinance. This is ordinance number 434, the City of Buchanan, an ordinance promoting a citywide policy of all inclusiveness and establishing practices of nondiscrimination throughout the corporate limits of the City of Buchanan, West Virginia, and further expanding the protections adopted by the city council pursuant to resolution number 2013-05. Whereas the City of Buchanan has long championed inclusiveness of all people and all things, regardless as to any person's race, color, ethnicity, religion, national origin, gender, age, disability, marital status, familial status, sexual orientation or gender identity, or veteran status. And whereas virtually all of the foregoing protected class statuses are already specifically protected by federal and/or state of West Virginia statutes, case law, and/or administrative rules and regulations. And whereas the City of Buchanan embraces the 14th Amendment to the United States Constitution that was adopted more than 150 years ago, that is July 9th, 1868, that specifically provides that no state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws. And whereas the council of the City of Buchanan adopted certain protections for persons based upon their orientation pursuant to resolution number 2013-05 that was adopted on May 2, 2013. And whereas to date, 11 West Virginia cities have adopted ordinances, expanding protections accorded to people based upon their orientation beyond a resolution, ordinance adoptive cities being Charleston, Harpers Ferry, Huntington, Thurman, Sutton, Lewisburg, Martinsburg, Shepherdstown, Charlestown, Wheeling, and Morgantown. The City of Charleston having been the first West Virginia city to adopt protections by ordinance 12 years ago in 2007. And several additional West Virginia cities have adopted nondiscrimination resolutions. And whereas Buchanan has been home to West Virginia Wesleyan College for 129 years, and W V W C specifically accords protections as provided in the college's student, faculty, and employee handbooks to all of the college's 1,500 campus community members, regardless of their orientation or gender identity. And whereas our Upsher County school system similarly has adopted measures designed to protect persons from being harassed, intimidated, bullied, or assaulted based upon their orientation or gender identity. And whereas the council believes it is reasonable and appropriate to follow the lead of its several sister cities and of some of our city's primary partners in success and collaborators, that is, West Virginia Wesleyan College and our Upsher County School System, by adopting an ordinance expanding protections accorded to people based upon their orientation and gender identity, now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the council of the City of Buchanan as follows. Article 1 is basically reiterated, stated as findings of council of various things that I just read in the whereas paragraphs. Article 2 provides 13 different definitions. Article 3, which is really the core of this ordinance, is captioned right of nondiscrimination, and it reads as follows. The right of anotherwise qualified person to be free from discrimination because of that person's race, color, ethnicity, religion, national origin, gender, age, disability, marital status, familial status, orientation or gender identity, or veteran status, is recognized as and declared to be actionable matter hereunder and actionable matter hereunder. This right shall include but shall not be limited to the following. One, the right to obtain and hold employment and the benefits associated therewith without discrimination. Two, the right to the full enjoyment of any of the accommodations, advantages, facilities, or privileges of any public accommodation without discrimination. Three, the right to engage in property transactions, including obtaining housing for rental or sale and credit therefore, without discrimination, except where any rental unit is a part of an owner-occupied building. For example, the owner resides in a common building with a portion of the owner's common building being rented to others. Four, the right to exercise any right granted under this ordinance without suffering coercion or retaliation. Article 4 is captioned exceptions, and I think it's an important, it's again, part of the core of this ordinance. These are the things that this ordinance would not apply to. Notwithstanding any of the foregoing provisions, the following shall not be deemed to be discriminatory practices prohibited by this ordinance. One, a church or other religious corporation, religious association, or religious society that employs an individual of a particular religion or faith to perform work connected with the performance of religious activities by the church or religious corporation, association, or society. Two, an employer who observes, excuse me, an employer who observes the conditions of a bona fide affirmative action plan or a bona fide seniority system, which is not a pretext to evade the purposes of this ordinance. And three, a rental unit that is a part of an owner-occupied building. For example, the owner resides in a common building with a portion of the owner's common building being rented to others. Article 5 is captioned enforcement, and it provides possible injunctive relief as to be issued through the city's municipal court. It also provides for the imposition, the possibility of the imposition of fines, up to $500 for a first violation, up to $1,000 for a second violation, and up to $1,500 for third and subsequent violations. Article 6 is captioned other remedies, and it provides, this ordinance shall not be construed to limit any other remedies otherwise available under or arising from other local, state, or federal statutes. Article 7 is the stock severability clause that we have in virtually all of our ordinances. And Article 8 is the effective date article. If passed this evening on a first reading, it would be taken up for a second reading on January 17, and if it passes on a second reading, it would be fully implemented on February 16 of 2019. Ladies and gentlemen, I would entertain a motion that the council consider ordinance 434 of the City of Buchanan. So move. I have a motion by Mr. Rylands. May I have a second to his motion?
Second.
I have a second by Mrs. Albaugh. The motion is now upon the table, first for council discussion, and then we will entertain guest discussion. Who would like to speak first?
Mayor, I've got some prepared remarks I'd like to share.
Have a look.
First of all, to the community, I'd like to extend my sincere gratitude for the prayers and consideration for my family upon the passage of Aunt Tappy. Her legacy at BUHS and our family, we bleed Buccaneer blue and white, and she will be greatly missed, not only for us, but in the sports and in the education system here in the community. So I want to thank everybody first on behalf of my family. I also want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I think that this is important, that we have feedback from the community when something like this comes up. So now I want to get into my remarks about this ordinance. So if you'll indulge me, I like to read these. This particular ordinance concerns me. I've slept very little and eaten pretty erratically over the past several days because of the angst over tonight. This is a no-win situation, and it's a proposal that should have never been placed on the agenda for consideration. Let me be very clear first. I in no way, shape, or form support any act of discrimination toward any member of the human race, period. I do, however, fundamentally disagree with a municipal governing body passing social legislation onto its citizens and businesses. That is wrong. City council should focus on providing the community with well-maintained streets, parks, and sidewalks. We should continue to invest in our public safety departments. We should develop policies that foster economic growth. We should always be good stewards of our finances. This proposal, the proposal of this ordinance shows that this governing body is not focused on the right things. Now, some of you may argue that this ordinance will help bring new people and businesses into the community. Sure, that's, that may be true. But it won't be in the top 10 reasons as to why someone would consider moving to or moving their business to Buchanan, or any city for that matter. It's far more important that our school system have a strong reputation, that our hospital be on the cutting edge of the latest medical advancement, that our tax structure be competitive, that our real estate market be attractive, that our crime rate be low, that our public safety officers be well-trained and well-staffed, and that our infrastructure be second to none. Fairness, West Virginia has been quoted in trying to label cities that did not pass the ordinance, this ordinance, as non-friendly and non-progressive communities. They cite Parkersburg, which is one of the cities who recently failed their version of the ordinance by a six-to-three vote, as a city that is in desperate need of this ordinance because, inhabit in place because they've lost population. However, Charleston, Huntington, Wheeling, Thurman, and Sutton, all places that have adopted the nondiscrimination ordinance structure, have all lost population. On the contrary, Martinsburg, Shepherdstown, Charlestown, Harpers Ferry, and Morgantown have all gained population. But we know why. It's their proximity to D.C. and then, of course, West Virginia University in Morgantown. Instilling change in a community is necessary for its future. That is true. But it's how we do it that will aid in the successful progression of or its miserable failure. I believe change happens when we lead by example and by our actions, not by the words on paper. We do not need an ordinance to tell us to be kind, to be heartfelt, to be compassionate, to be understanding, to be loving, or to be accepting. The most influential leaders in our history were servant leaders. They dug deep, invested in their people, and worked among them to make a difference. Human nature dictates that we do not like to behave, we do not like to be told how to behave, we want to be shown how to behave. Finally, the proposal of this ordinance undermines the recent strides that Buchanan has made to be a community where everyone is rowing the boat in the same direction. We've overcome extreme obstacles to become the beautiful, bustling, and friendly community that we are, and we are well-known to be across the state and across this region. I've had the opportunity to travel to all 55 counties in the state of West Virginia, as well as all 55 county seats. I can tell you that we're different because we're working together. Unfortunately, just the proposal of this ordinance, clearly by the room, I know a lot of people in the room, has already parted the seas. And for that, I am truly saddened, because it didn't need to happen. When I ran for city council, I vowed to you, I vowed to, I vowed to every person I went door to door to, that I will always do what's best for our community. So I've worked hard to make sure that I've kept that mindset at the forefront of every decision. Sometimes it goes against my personal feelings. If I was being personal tonight, I'd be with my family. But I'm here because this is important, because Buchanan isn't about me. Buchanan is about all of us, and I love this place dearly. This is my hometown. I was born here, at St. Joseph's Hospital. I graduated from Buchanan Upsher High School, and I'm very proud of that. I also graduated from West Virginia Wesleyan, and I've chosen to make my business and my career and my happiness and my life here. I can't support an ordinance that I see as a mechanism to tear us apart. I want to do, I want to pass ordinances, and I want to lead, and I want to be a part of a community, and I want to be a part of things that bring us together. And that's what I have to say.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to speak next, if that's possible.
Sure, have a look.
There is not a person on the left or the right in this room that I either dislike or hate. I'm going to begin with that. On either side. I've gone back and forth with this ordinance. Andrew Schneider, if he were here tonight, he would tell you that I've gone back and forth. I've asked a lot of hard questions of him, of myself, of the council, of the city, of what's right, of what's wrong, of what preserves liberty and promotes liberty, what reduces liberty. And here is my conclusion, after an equal amount of sleepless nights and lack of eating, which is probably a good thing after the holidays.
Yeah, it's true.
Here are my conclusions. The mayor has said it time and time again, and let me also preface by saying that I've fully supported many, many, many of the things that Mayor McCauley has done, including the sales tax, including the Arts and Culture Initiative, and I will not take that back, and I'll do it again. However, Mayor McCauley has said on multiple occasions, and he will probably say tonight, that he views sexuality, human sexuality, sexual orientation, and gender identity to be on par with race. If that is your viewpoint, then this thing needs to pass. However, however, this council does not have the right to impose that understanding of the apparent equality of human sexuality and race upon the vast majority of the members of the residents of this city. I spent a lot of time talking to a lot of business owners, a lot of people that live in this town, and nine out of 10 voices have said to me, this is not a... in this town, and nine out of 10 voices have said to me, this is not only unnecessary, it's divisive, and it's going to hurt us. This council does not have the right to impose that perspective upon people with alternative viewpoints. The second issue that I have, in the exemptions, we find some protections for organized churches, nonprofit organizations, religious groups and organizations, but we don't find any protection for individual Christians who may or may not agree with these understandings. There are no protections for individual pastors who perform marriages, and who may decide not to perform the public accommodation of marriage for a gay marriage of any kind. So I find the protections in place for those of alternative belief in this community who happen to be the majority to be insufficient. Third, I believe that business owners are individuals with free moral agency. They take a beating, they're fun to beat up, I know. I beat up other business owners. I get beat up all the time. It's just part of the game. That's fine. But business owners are employers. They take risk, they struggle, they spend the night wondering how they're going to make payroll tomorrow, they drive to Michigan to pick up checks to make sure their employees are taken care of. That's what business owners often deal with. And to try and attempt to strip away the free moral agency of a business owner to make his determinations, or her determinations about what he or she thinks to be right or wrong, is not only immoral, it's unsafe, and it's un-American. I also want to go ahead and preemptively say, if there is an attempt to table this tonight, I'm going to vehemently fight that and bring it for a vote tonight. There are people of both sides here, liberal, conservative, right, left, centrist. We claim to be a transparent government. We claim to be leaders in this community. So I'm going to go ahead and ask that regardless of these statements made by all the individuals here tonight, that we live up to what we claim to be, a brave, bold, fearless, transparent government, and take a vote tonight in front of everybody. We need to settle this today, one way or another. If this ordinance passes, I'm going to sign it. I'm the city recorder. I will sign it if it passes. That's the right thing for me to do in my position. I took an oath. But I will do so under protest. That's all I have to say.
If our intention is to be a safe, affordable, welcoming community, where a point is made to include everyone that wants to participate, then we have to behave in line with those According to the last census, Upshur County was 97.6% Caucasian. If you look around the country and you find places that are following a path of ascension, there's a much greater element of diversity. And I think it's important that people of different persuasions and orientations feel that they're welcome in our community, and I support this.
Thank you, Mayor.
I just want to say, I have friends that belong to the LGBT community. I have relatives who belong to that also, and I am no way, shape, or form against anybody. But my problem is, I've been in business for years, and I feel as a taxpayer and as a businessperson, I should have the right to not perform a service for a person, because I've gone through a lot of stuff with people who've come in and given me really big problems, and, and I feel that I should have that right to turn them away or say no. And I also believe this is going to open up can of worms if we pass this. And we all have loved ones. There probably isn't any of us that's not touched with this, and it is a hard decision. But my decision, I will vote no against it, because right now, that's what I feel. I feel it's best for the community, and that's just all I have to say about it.
I did a lot of thinking, a lot of soul-searching, and I love you all, okay? I had two very nice gentlemen to contact me, one of them twice, and, and I respect each of you for speaking up and, and using your freedom of speech, your, 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 your thinking, all of it. I wish it was always this way in this city council chambers. Well, it's, you know, it would be nice to have a big crowd every two times a month, but no, we've got this controversy here, okay? And I know it's a personal issue for everyone. Like, my vote is a personal issue to me. I did a lot of thinking, I did a lot of praying, and I have to decide what I was, what I felt was right. I am a Christian, and I do believe, but I have to think what is best as a city council person and separate myself. I'm not a businessperson. I'm a worker. I'm a caregiver, okay? I caregiver, I caregiver this city, because I love it, and I love the people. And I don't care who you are or what you do, all right? I'm not the person to judge anybody. None of you are, and nobody here is. We're here to run a city the best way we can possible, and to do that, we have to be more open, we have to be more caring, which we are, but even more so, we have to welcome people to come in within our community. That's how we grow. And, and I think there's a lot of things, when the, one person talked to me about all this bullying, and bullying, and bullying, and bullying in the high school, and the media, and the middle school, it happens. And because I have friends that it's happening to, their children, and so, because I've witnessed that and seen their heartbreak from these kids, I was torn too. But I still believe that what we're doing here is, is right. We just have to go on.
Dave Thomas.
I think one of the worst fights I ever gotten through my life was when I was a freshman in college, and lived in an athletic dorm, and somebody was getting the hell beat out of him because they were gay. And I had to break the door down.
Can you speak louder?
I'm sorry. So one of the worst fights I ever got into in my life was when I lived in a dormitory residence hall of college, and somebody was getting the hell beat out of him because he was gay. And I had to kick the door down to help the person out. I also, when I ran for city council the first time, 2004, because I'm blind, it was difficult for me to go door-to-door. So I had some volunteers, many of them, that would take me around and I'd knock on doors. And some of my friends are gay. And I had a couple phone calls the, after that, and a person said, you know that person walking around has an alternative lifestyle and is gay? And I said, yes, I know that. And he said, well, I'm not going to vote for you. I said, fine, I don't want your vote. But I am really, really proud, well, of everybody up here saying what they think. But I'm especially proud of our two youngest members in city council, and what they had to say. And we need to be transparent. And I don't think you can put something on paper, and that's how you're going to be friendly and open, inclusive, and so forth. You do it by your actions, by what you do for the community. Racism and bigotry is not genetic, it's taught, and I believe that firmly. And I, I delight this process that we did. The ordinance was not finalized until late yesterday, that's my understanding, or in the afternoon. I read it for the first time today. Based on what I read today, I will vote against it. I don't think it's something that...
Everybody else has gotten to offer their remarks.
I am 100% supportive of this ordinance. We all have to be able to look ourselves in the mirror and try to do the best we can for the people that we represent. And we have a great number of gay folks at Wesleyan College out of Buchanan Upshur High School, right here in our corporate limits, business people that work on the streets just up the way. And Mr. Skinner, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in the same position as Dave Thomas. I take offense to your comments and suggestions that we have created this divisive thing. First off, it was not my initiative to create this. It were members of our community, primarily people of alternative orientations, who sought out the assistance of Fairness West Virginia to come here, and Andrew Schneider had been here two or three times and addressed this council over the past two years, and they asked for this matter to be considered. Has nothing to do with creating an unnecessary divisive thing. Oftentimes, some of the foremost issues that our democratic republic takes up, whether it's at the state level, or the federal level, or at the local level, or the rubber really does hit the road, by the way, originate at the local level. I want to give you a similar story. I've taught up at Wesleyan for the last 36 years, and the majority of that time, I've taught constitutional law. And we all know the history lesson from the Civil War, 1861 to 1865. And there was a landmark case decided by the United States Supreme Court in 1896. It involved a fellow who was one-eighth black. His name was Homer Plessy, and it happened down in the state of Louisiana. And Homer Plessy was a test case for the fledgling what really ultimately became the NAACP. Homer Plessy had the audacity to board a white car on a train, and he was a one-eighth black man, and the conductor didn't know that he was one-eighth black. And Homer Plessy gets on the car, and he starts yelling, "I'm one-eighth black, I'm one-eighth black." And the conductor says, "Keep it down. You can just ride on the white car because you don't really look like you're black." "Oh, no, I'm black, I'm proud, I'm..." So they call a detective, the cops drag him off. Case goes to the United States Supreme Court, and the US Supreme Court, in one of the most shameful decisions in the history of this country, decided that Homer Plessy didn't have equal protection under the law. And that case stayed the law of this nation until 58 years later, when our United States Supreme Court had the fortitude to overturn Plessy versus Ferguson in Brown versus Board of Education of Topeka, Kansas, and the other four companion cases. To this day, Pam Capery says, "I just don't think people should have to be confronted with taking care of people like this." Well, Pam, I got news for you. If someone who was black came into your beauty parlor tomorrow and said, "I'd like a haircut," and you happen to be a bigoted person who doesn't like black people, or Jewish people, or Islamic people, or people who are Italian, or Polish, or whatever it is, you better cut their hair, because those folks have all of those protections to go against you or Walmart, the biggest businesses, the smallest businesses, you get the idea. All we're, all we're doing with this ordinance is attempting to extend the protections to people of other orientations. They would enjoy the same rights as people of color, ethnicity, age, handicap, religion. That's all, that's all that this ordinance is intended to do, is level the playing field to make it equally inviting for everyone to live here.
I'm never turning anybody...
I know you haven't.
As a taxpayer, as a taxpayer, if somebody comes in there who treats me disrespectfully, I should have the right to say, "I'm not going to wait on you."
Absolutely. And it wouldn't make any difference whether they were straight, gay, or whatever.
Exactly.
That's exactly right. And it wouldn't make any difference whether they were black, white, or whatever.
Right.
Or whether they were Methodist, Jewish, or an atheist. It wouldn't make any difference if they were disrespectful towards you.
Right.
But we're not talking about disrespect. We're talking about according respect to all people under the equal protection clause. That's what this ordinance is about. So I...
Mayor, can I ask you a legal question?
Sure, how about it?
I'm not an attorney, and I don't play one on TV.
Well, I am.
No, that's why I'm asking you. That's why I'm asking you. Here's my question. Can I be turned away from a business because I'm a Christian legally in the United States?
No.
I can?
No.
Okay.
No.
And I'm not a lawyer either. I'm not that. Can I ask why we're preparing, Rob Allen, comparing race and sexual preference? What I see is apples and oranges. Anytime there's discrimination, I disagree with it. Nobody should be denied the rights. However, what you just explained, you gave a story about Civil War, you gave a story about racism.
True.
And then you equate that to sexual preference.
100%.
When I fill out a government application, when I fill out a government application, or any application, it says, are you white, black, Caucasian, Indian, whatever? It doesn't say, are you white, black, Caucasian, homosexual, lesbian, undecided? They're not in the same category. You need to separate those two before you go for your proposal.
No, sir, you should read the briefs in the case of Obergefell versus Hodges. It's out of three years ago.
Sir, I'm not a lawyer with 30 years' experience, but I'm an American with common sense.
The US Supreme Court.
I recognize the mayor's common sense, thank you.
The US Supreme Court has declared in Obergefell versus Hodges.
Does this cover the express clause of the First Amendment since you're aware, and you're studying at the U.S. Supreme? I'd rather just do with the freedom of religion.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, the mayor has the floor. This is the city council, this is a formal meeting of the state of West Virginia. Please do not interrupt what's taking place here. These folks have spoken their hearts, we need to listen to them. It'll be appropriate time for anyone else who wants to speak.
Thank you. The race, sexual orientation situation in Obergefell versus Hodges is exactly where the Civil War came up, and the analogy John from Plessy versus Ferguson to Brown versus Board of Education. I'm citing you, the successful, it was a 5-4 case, by the way, close. But that's basically the essence of the prevailing party's brief in Obergefell. So that's the reason I bring it up. I cite the, the ultimate body that's ultimately going to decide all these issues is the US Supreme Court. I think we all know that. We got a whole bunch of folks who are signed up here to share stuff with us, Mr. Pugh. I'll be happy to call upon you here in a couple of minutes.
I'll be happy to wait.
Yeah, adding to the end, yeah, yeah. You'll be happy to wait about 12:30, 1:00.
My wife's not older than I am.
Rhonda, you need to sit down. I think you need to sit down.
Is it your birthday today, or? Shawna Jones, Shawna, are you here?
I was, I was, I need to stand, I need to stand too. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
My name is Shawna Jones. I've been in Buchanan, my home, since fall of 1988, when I came as a freshman to Wesleyan. Our son is now in his freshman year at Wesleyan, where I am proud to work, and I serve many minorities, both of racial and sexual differences, and I'm very proud of what I do. I'd like us to shift for just a couple minutes from data and debate and focus on our story. When Greg and I became pregnant in early fall of 1999, we talked about our baby's future. We committed that there would be nothing, nothing, that would make us not love our child, including if he or she were gay. There are two families in this town, hard-working, tax-paying owners of prominent businesses. Each family has a child that is LGBTQ. Obviously, there are more families, but these are two families that our own has taken communion with, prayed with, eaten with, volunteered with, grieved with, celebrated with, and called friends. The grown children live elsewhere and are hard-working, tax-paying, creative, and involved. Let's suppose that one or both of them would like to return to Buchanan and open a business. What would draw them home? Lauren Lamb said, "In a short time, I've managed to bring on large clients such as WVU Medicine, work with businesses in Bacchanan like Stone Tower Brews and True Solar, and your point, Shawna, is absolutely right. When I decide to open a brick and mortar business for my business, why would I choose a place that didn't not only support, but embrace the person that I am? One thing I've been very proud about in my hometown is the inclusive mentality I've seen in recent years. A drag show in Trader's Alley back at Halloween, awesome. All the little inclusive signs in downtown businesses' windows, awesome. I'd hate to see Bacchanan take what feels like a step backwards after starting to become what seems to be a special little place in this state where people love one another for who they are." Brett Harmon said, "As for my personal story, I think I always knew I would move away from Bacchanan in West Virginia, and not because I don't love Bacchanan. It was, is, and always will be my home, but I felt that when we're progressive, inclusive places, I could live where I didn't have to hide who I was, or worry about being discriminated against, which I feel I should note, I'd never personally experienced any direct discrimination while I lived in Bacchanan, but knew that possibility existed. And at this point in my life, especially in my career with working in a large national CPA firm, I don't foresee moving back to Bacchanan. I might add, though, that our council members have a choice, that they can choose to move Bacchanan forward and be a leader for the state, and be an example of what a supportive community should be, or they can choose to support and promote discrimination and hate that sends a message that all are not welcome in Bacchanan. I'd love to say two brief things on my part before I set. Number one, I don't know most people's families, but I can speak to myself. We're bandying about race in this room. My family is 75% mixed race, black. I'm the minority in my family. If you want to talk later at some point, anytime, over lunches, what it's like for my family to come up from Charleston, the courageousness it took to have them come up for mine and Greg's wedding, for Garrett's christening, and to sit in a row at our church and wonder where people talking about us. If you want to talk about that, we can, because I do have personal experience with that. I'd also like to say that I pray, as soon as I wake up, I pray at night, I pray throughout the day as needed. I am a Christian, and I believe that we're not here to just support Christian views. We're here to support all citizens, and all potential citizens of our community. Bacchanan's writing its story. We're writing our story tonight, we'll continue to write our story. All I ask is that we step back, breathe, and we make sure that the narrative we write is one of inclusiveness, connection, and community. Thank you."
I'm not sure if this is Shawna or Charlotte Smith. Charlotte Smith. Charlotte, are you here? Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good old things.
Robbie, can I have a minute to you?
Sure.
I've been really torn on whether to speak or not speak, because I've been scrutinized over the last couple of months over a number of different things. I think I've decided to go ahead and do this. Good evening, my name is Charlotte Smith. I'm here not only speaking as an individual, but also representing the Bacchanan Salvation Army. I wanted to take a moment to share with you what I have already experienced without this ordinance in place. Two months ago, I experienced having my name, my title, and I'm affiliated with the Bacchanan Salvation Army blasted over social media in a demeaning, rude, hurtful, and very disrespectful manner. I was accused of discriminating, being unfair, and judging simply because of where I work, be it not even knowing me, or where I stand as an individual. All of this passed off to me based off of a comment made in 2001 from a Salvation Army senior official in a completely different state. These blasts and comments were sadly that of an individual of a different agency located right here within our city limits, which made it even harder. We here at our local Salvation Army do not discriminate against anyone as a store, or as we, the individuals that work there. I've had many LGBTQ members come through our door as we welcome them and treat them as all others. We also have had many members complete community service, as well as volunteer at our establishment. With all this being said, I want to share the most disturbing part of this social media blast. This same individual also encouraged the citizens of Upshur County to place an LGBTQ support voucher, which I just handed you, in our Red Kettles during the past season instead of money. The Salvation Army uses the funds collected over a simple 30-day period to stock our pantry, pay utilities, help with dentures, glasses, funeral expenses throughout the year. Thankfully, we did not see not one of these vouchers, but what if this would have taken place? It would have greatly impacted the residents of our county, especially the local city residents in which rely on the Salvation Army more so than the county residents. This ordinance can do great damage that can have a rippling effect to the citizens that rely on local agencies and churches for living assistance. Please take this into consideration. Thank you.
Rhonda Lee Barber.
I want to thank all of you for serving. I want you to realize it's not a thankless job. I'm grateful that you're here, I'm grateful you do what you do, even though, you know, sometimes you might provoke ire with whatever you might propose, and, or you might provoke ire for whatever opinion you might express. That won't come from me. I appreciate what you do, whether or not I agree with you. I will speak to you as an atheist, that is what I am as far as my religious affiliation goes. This ordinance covers me as well. And I'm glad that you're proposing this, and including religious views as part of it. It makes me feel more protected. I already work in the school system, I work in Lewis County school systems. I live in Upshur County, I live on Shawty Drive. I worked in Lewis County because I had a very sage and wise professor give me some advice that says, "If you want to do privacy, work in a different county from where you live." I took his advice to heart. As far as the ordinance goes, it not only protects me, it protects everyone. It's considering everybody, it's all-inclusive, it's not excluding anybody. And to me, it sounds like the arguments against the ordinance tend to lean towards arguing against including people. And I don't see how that could be positive or productive, or can promote growth. As far as the remarks that some of you have made towards, you know, "I want to be shown how to behave, we should lead by example, we don't need rules, we don't need ordinances to tell us how to behave," I respectfully disagree. Because if that were true, why have rules or laws at all? If we didn't need to be told how to behave, we wouldn't need rules, we wouldn't need laws, we wouldn't need ordinances at all. There would be no prisons, there would be no fines, there would be nothing of that sort. Sometimes we do have to be told how to behave. And it, it won't, it may divide us, there may be some uproar for a little bit, but we'll survive it, we'll get through it, and we'll adjust. Just like we did with the suffragette movement, just like we did with the civil rights movement, just like we did with the women's rights movement, just like we have with every civil rights movement that has ever come along, every civil rights battle that has ever come along. And that's what this is. This is a civil rights ordinance. It's a civil rights ordinance that is covering all people. Whether or not you agree, and whether or not you believe we'll survive it, we will.
I believe in attentive men.
Only, only recently, just last year, I had to fight my own civil rights battle, a violation of the Establishment Clause that was going on in my school. They were bringing in a group that was going to proselytize and promote a Christian agenda at the school in our gym. My son was attending school at the time. I had to contact the Freedom from Religion Foundation, the Americans United for Separation of Church and State, and the, the ACLU. I contacted them because they were going to make my son go and take a character ed course rather than going to this. That was their answer. That was their answer. I fought that battle. Oh, boy, was there backlash. I became a pariah. I was attacked, my name was brought up, I don't know, countless times on Weston Topicx page. Some of you may already be aware of Topicx, T-O-P-I-X.
It's not here anymore.
No, but that was what was going on at the time. I, I was attacked to my face, I was attacked behind my back, but I didn't quit. And I survived, and will survive this too. I thank you for introducing this ordinance.
Crystal Brown, Crystal, are you here?
One more time.
Crystal Brown.
Crystal.
Crystal Brown.
Crystal.
I'm with the baby.
We're standing here, or where are we standing? Right here? Okay. All right, hi. So, I really believe that our success as a community depends on our ability to be inclusive. I'm a professor at West Virginia Wesleyan College, and I work with a diverse body of students, faculty, and staff. The diversity creates a rich, valuable learning environment in which I am proud to be a part of. I support the nondiscrimination ordinance, because it will protect all members of our community, and will promote fairness for all of us, all of us. Keyword, "all of us," fairness for all of us. Just, just making sure. And I do believe that it is our government's job to protect us, to protect our citizens and to protect our community. Thanks.
Say again.
Pauline Hoover.
Holly.
Holly Hoover.
I'm Pastor Holly Hoover, Pastor of Good Hope Cavern Apple Church, I'm very funny. I didn't know I was going to speak, so I don't have a script. Personally, I am against the ordinance, because I feel like that I'll be discriminated against in my, my business, which is pastoring a church. And if something would come up that someone would, would want to be married, that are, they're gay, I refuse, then I'm, I'm going to have lawsuits on my hands. So I'm against the ordinance.
Eddie McDaniel.
Hi, Eddie. I was thinking about you yesterday.
What, me?
I was thinking about you yesterday.
Appreciate that very much.
13 years ago, I remember.
We were at Sagomond again.
Yes, we were.
This is a tough issue, there's just no doubt about it, and the, the whole issue to me is just because we disagree, we don't have to be disagreeable. We don't have to, I hate, I hate the word "hate," ought to be not a part of our agenda. We, we need to really genuinely care for, for each other, and, you know, we all have different thoughts. You know, I, I listed for me the things that, you know, about hate has no home here, but when I tell you a little bit about myself, you would, some of you would say, "I don't like you." I'm a conservative. I, I, I believe in that Second Amendment. I'm a member of the NRA. I voted for Donald Trump. I believe that we should wait until we're married to have sex. I, I, I just have those beliefs, but you shouldn't look at me and think, you know, "I don't want to associate with you." You have some different beliefs, and, and it's never been one for me to say, "I don't want to associate with you." But we have a right in America to disagree. We have a right to be able to make choices, but we don't have to be a people that would be disagreeable. And so I'm hoping that we can understand that in a church, Jesus, I think, has said it best, when he says that "we are called upon to love, love even our enemies." And I don't look at any of you as my enemy. But he calls upon us to be able to do that. Yet we still have that right to be able to choose how we want to be able to believe. And, and so I would like for, for, you know, this resolution, I am not for the resolution. I'm happy for the ordinances that I hear you read about the church, but it just seems like, as someone said, we're opening up an issue that we may not know where it's going to end. So I would like to go on record to say, I'm not for that, the, the resolution. And, and I want to say too, is that I was happy down at our city, building a Jawboon Park, I saw the lighting of the menorah, I'm happy that we were inclusive to be able to do that. I thought, though, my thought was, would it be permissible to put a nativity scene by there next year? I mean, I, I wondered, because we fought a battle a long time ago on courthouse steps, we couldn't do it. And I decided to do something different and have a live nativity scene. I hope that we can be acceptable to everyone's belief. That's why we, I think, are in the greatest nation on the face of the earth. We have a right to choose. And I would want to say to any of you, you're welcome, and I think I could say for Holly, for Ed, for any other minister, you're welcome at Christian Fellowship Church. We would not keep anybody from coming through the door. We, we, we have a sign that says, "All are welcome," and we mean it. We just mean that. And I would like to be able to say in our community, "Hate has no home here, so don't hate me just because I'm a right-wing, narrow-minded conservative."
My name's Adam Burkehamer, born and raised here in Upshur County, then moved across the county lines, don't tell anybody I did that, but in the Lewis County, but still consider Buckhannon home. Also the assistant pastor of Cornerstone Community Church, and a small business throughout the state of West Virginia, and a lot of business ties here in the community. And I am feared that those business ties will be hurt through this. And so I'm going to read to you, so that emotion doesn't take, but, "I am saddened by the lack of respect for God's Word as it has come under attack, and that it is no longer recognized as holy and sacred. If God's Word is, no longer means anything to our society, then where does that stop? Who writes the laws? Who sets the standards? Who makes moral to our society? Up to this point, the Bible was doing that. Murder was not right. Stealing was not right. Sleeping with your neighbor was not right, because the Bible set those standards." So if we go down this slope, as some have said, where does it stop? Because this just doesn't make sense. And we as Christians, and we as a community must draw the line in the sand somewhere. Physical anatomy tells me that these things aren't right, and I'm not a college-educated man, but it takes me to figure that out. Our moral compass has begun to decay, and it must stop now, and we must slow the rot. I worry that if we continue down this slope, then what is accepted as wrong today will be accepted as right tomorrow. For example, we would never condone drinking and driving, stealing from our neighbor, or let's go as crazy as child molestation. You say those things will never come up, but I believe years ago, people would have thought we would never be here today, having this discussion. So you're going to call me a hater. I'm far from it. As Pastor Ed said, we welcome you in our church. We actually have those from the LGBT community in our church, and we are glad to welcome you there. We love everyone and hate no one. I am here because I love everyone, and I do want the best for you regardless of what you're struggling with, whether it is an LGBT... be accepted as right tomorrow. For example, we would never condone drinking and driving, stealing from our neighbor, or let's go as crazy as child molestation. You say those things will never come up, but I believe years ago, people would have thought we would never be here today having this discussion. So you're going to call me a hater. I'm far from it. As Pastor Ed said, we welcome you in our church. We actually have those from the LGBT community in our church, and we are glad to welcome you there. We love everyone and hate no one. I am here because I love everyone and I do want the best for you regardless of what you're struggling with, whether it is an LGBT, whether it's drug addiction, alcoholism, whatever the problem is, we love you and we want to help you. But this movement is not healthy. Things like STDs, depression, even suicide are higher in this movement. We should not allow it, but we should assist it. We should counsel. We should move beyond the hate and move to a place where we help people through these things. That's what we do as a community already through the, the house that Mr. Kerner runs, through Celebrate Recovery that Pastor Doug runs, and, and we are helping our community get better. And I believe this is a step in the wrong direction. But I've come to realize that we've got a serious problem in this country. It isn't an LGBT problem. It's not a gun problem. It's not an immigration build-the-wall problem. It's not an abortion problem. It's not a Republican or Democrat or a right or a left problem. We have a severe spiritual and moral problem. I propose that you guys, standing with a few, are coming against the most. We don't make ordinances or laws forcing what your relationship, what your struggle is, that it is wrong. And we ask that you not force your views, your lifestyles, on us. That is not freedom. That is not the American dream. So I ask that you oppose this strongly. And I would have to say, for those that think the Bible is not what it once was, I saw everybody in here, I believe, stand up and take a pledge to that flag and say, "This nation was under God."
Hi, I'm Ed Duane Howard Jack. I am a teacher at Buchanan After High School, and, um, I want to thank you for, you know, proposing the ordinance and attempting to move it forward. I am in favor of it, and, um, I've prepared a few words, um, and some of it will be sort of ad-lib, but, um, in my mind, I think, what's the opposite of nondiscrimination? Discrimination. It's simple. If you are for nondiscrimination, if you are not for nondiscrimination, you are for discrimination. I've agreed to, uh, adopt, I guess, or I've inherited the Gay-Straight Alliance Club at the high school, at the Buchanan After High School. I was thrilled to, uh, see that our school system, um, was, uh, was collaborating with you, uh, in the ordinance and also Wesleyan. I'm an alumni of Wesleyan. I've lived in Buchanan all my life. I'm a tax-paying citizen. I was born at, uh, right here at St. James Hospital. Uh, went to Wesleyan and, and have, um, taught here, uh, for 23 years. Other than two years, I worked at the West Virginia State Department of Education. So I'm a longtime resident. My family has been here for generations. Um, I'm not a transplant or anything like that. So, um, in, in, uh, meeting with this Gay-Straight Alliance for the first time this year, I'll take over that club fully next year, um, I got to meet with about 20 high school students who are residents of this county, who, uh, talked about their, uh, struggles. Um, it just, uh, I mean, it breaks your heart to hear that, to hear that they are called abominations, that they are, um, bullied and harassed on a daily basis, that they are, um, disowned sometimes from their own families. There's a very high rate of suicide among the LGBTQ population for all of those reasons. And it's, to me, inhumane to ignore those struggles. Um, and, and to put something in place that would help to protect them and others in our community, to make it inclusive, um, is, is the morally right thing to do. I am a lifelong Presbyterian. Um, we settled this issue in my church a long time ago when we decided that not only could LGBTQ people be members, they could also be reverends and ministers. And, um, we believe in the, the golden rule, which is do unto others as you would have them do unto you. And so, you know, somebody is not going to, gay, being gay is not contagious. Nobody's trying to say that just because we're going to be accepting and provide, um, some protections for LGBTQ students or, uh, adults, that we are, you know, saying that everyone has to believe that. I don't think anybody is saying that we all have to believe the same things. We're just, I think, trying to say that we would like for it to be fair and just for everyone on an equal basis. And that doesn't mean that if you are, that if you are Christian and that you don't believe in being LGBTQ, that you have to be or that you have to accept that. It just means that we're going to, that we're going to be fair and just to everyone. And if you, uh, think, think back in history, um, really, if you're saying that we shouldn't, um, that we shouldn't move forward with this ordinance, I don't see how that's different from the Jim Crow laws of the past. Um, it basically is just saying that we are separate and unequal. And I think that this is the civil rights issue of our day and that it is our, it, it is our duty as human beings to protect the most vulnerable in our society. And this population at this time is one of the most, one of the most vulnerable, if not the most vulnerable. And again, I think as Christians, that's what we're called to do. Um, that being said, I was given a couple of, um, stories that there were two people who couldn't be here who wanted to be, and they asked me to read their words to you. The first is Robert Sargent. And he said, "I'm writing to ask Buchanan City Council to further stand up for LGBTQ citizens by passing the nondiscrimination ordinance. I applaud the council for resolution passed a few years ago protecting our LGBTQ community from discrimination in city employment. However, I have concerns for myself and self and other LGBTQ citizens. As a gay Upshur County resident and taxpayer, this issue still affects me. I shop and conduct county government business in the city of Buchanan. With recent political events, I'm very concerned about potential confrontations doing business in Upshur County and specifically the city of Buchanan. We live in a very rural area and shopping choices are very limited. I'm very open to others having different beliefs, but as a citizen and consumer, I should not have to be worried going into a business wondering if I will be served, simply due to the orientation I was born with. I, I urge you to pass this ordinance to protect both current and potential Buchanan residents and consumers from discrimination in employment, housing, and public accommodations in the city limits. Thank you, Robert Sargent." And the second one is from Sarah Fincham. I'm going to have to scroll up a little bit if you give me a second. She really wanted to be here tonight, but she couldn't. She has, uh, children that she's caring for, which she'll share in her story. She said, and this print is small and I'm getting old and I can't see very well, so bear with me. Um, "I stand in front of you today as a single mother of two. I should start off by saying that the term 'mother' is not quite yet a word that I am comfortable with. I raised two children, neither of which I've birthed. Unfortunately, my sisters are losing their battles to addiction, a future I did not foresee when we were children. But nevertheless, this is where we are: children born of trauma and addiction and me trying to put a Band-Aid on the boo-boo. I don't know how I'm doing, as every day is a struggle. I've raised my niece for six years and my nephew since he was born. Eight months ago, addicted to four different drugs and in the hospital for the first month of his life, going through withdrawals. I had to learn how to give him methadone before I could bring him home with me. A second child that I was not prepared to raise, but that I would never refuse. But as you can imagine, asking my sister's children to call me mom, even if I am the only mother they've ever known, feels a little like betrayal. So does living in a place where people are legally allowed to discriminate against you. Let me say that there is a lot of crying in my house, me from being overwhelmed most days, my nine-year-old when her ta, when her tablet time is up, and my eight, eight-month-old when he is hungry or tired, teething or gassy, or using the bathroom, or too hot or too cold, or wants a bottle instead of baby food, or wants baby food instead of a bottle, or doesn't want anything at all, or if you stop walking for more than a second, or if you hold him the wrong way or put him down. Somebody once told me that crying is the way your eyes speak when your mouth can't explain how broken you are. Those of us who are here tonight in support of the nondiscrimination ordinance are trying to explain why it is important, why our hearts are broken, why worrying if we're going to be fired from our jobs or evicted from our homes." Or evicted from our homes. Because of who we love, um, okay, I'm sorry. Why worrying if we're important, why our hearts are broken, why worrying if we're going to be fired from our jobs or evicted from our homes because of who we love, shouldn't be something we cry about. I try to live my life by guiding principles. Be the things you love most about the people who are going. If my grandma were here, still, she'd be sitting right here in front of me now, making sure the city that, that she loved would be the city that loved back. If my grand, if my grandpa were still here, he'd tell me, "Sarah, you're the kind of girl, girl boys will open doors for, but I know you're not attracted to boys. So open your own damn doors. I'm proud of you." I hope, if nothing else, I've opened some doors to your hearts tonight. There is an, an Audrey Lord quote that I love. "I want to live the rest of my life with as much sweetness as I can decently manage, loving all the people I love and doing as much as I can of the work I still have to do." I hope we can all agree that this is work that deserves to be done, that this is a boo-boo we can bandage, and that our tears stop here. "For you have sorrow now, but I will see you again, and your hearts will rejoice, and no one will take your joy from you." John 16:22. And with that, I'll close and just say that, to me, it's easy. It's about what, what side of history you want to be on. And, um, I think that if we are going to support people who have stories like Sarah and Robert, that are community members of ours and our students at Buchanan After High School and our students at Wesleyan, that we have, we have to take a step forward. We have to say that we are inclusive. If we're inclusive, that means all, that is everyone. Thank you.
Josh, are you here?
Yeah, I'm right here. My name is Josh Leighton. Thank you. I'm a pastor at Calver Chapel Mountain Highlands. I'm also a United States Air Force chaplain. Uh, so, uh, I want to first say, you four, thank you so much for your stance, uh, because I've been there, seen that, been through the whole gamut of all of the information getting just plummeted at us. If you haven't been keeping up with all the information within the military, there's a lot that goes through. Uh, finally, we seem to kind of work it out, and what we've come down to is religious convictions are extremely strong. So those things are not something that's just going to take a backseat. Uh, so what we've come down to in the military is you stand on your religious convictions and you be the best person that you can be. Uh, what that means is, uh, those that are Muslim, you be the best Muslim chaplain you can be. Those who are, you know, Jesus chaplains, like myself, evangelical, Bible-teaching chaplains, that means I be the best Bible-teaching chaplain that I can be. With that said, there's going to be certain things we cover, certain beliefs I have that this ordinance, I believe, would put me in a line of fire. Uh, because I hold these, I put all of my teachings online. And when I put all of my teachings online, anyone can look at these teachings, and as I can cover certain passage, passages that I hold true, uh, those are these things that then we must acknowledge. These are my convictions, you know, and I respect you, I love you, but my convictions say that there's freedom, uh, in what the Bible teaches. Uh, you know, Assa, who came down to Phrius. These are my convictions. Uh, so I want to applaud you. Man, you guys said it best. So, uh, I, I don't know how, how old are you?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. Can, can I high-five you in the air?
Sure.
Boom.
Thirty.
Thirty. Yeah. Can I high-five you in the air? Boom. And I, I'm going to high-five you, I'm going to ask you. High-five? And right there, you can't see me, right? You're blind, right? I'm high-fiving.
I'm not telling you how old I am.
Because I've seen in the military, uh, this come around here, uh, and I want to encourage you, because this, this ordinance, it does cause division. I've seen it in the military time and time again, and are finally coming to the realization that, man, uh, yeah, this is going to cause division, so you just be who you are. With that said, there's going to be a wide diversity of people. As you said, people are up here saying, you know, "Hey, I'm a Christian, but I hold this view." But there's also going to be a wide diversity of individuals. So I would just want to commend you. Well done. With that being said, you know, as pastors, as chaplain, uh, I, I, I do disagree with this ordinance officially. I think this does cause an immense amount of division, as you could probably already see. So, uh, with that said, that is my official stance. Thank you.
Am I correct? What? It's Witt.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Alan Witt. I'm the president of the Family Policy Council here in West Virginia. Uh, our organization defends faith, family, and freedom. We oftentimes consult local citizens who contact us about these very types of ordinances. So I have spoken, I think now this is my seventh or eighth, uh, time to evolve with a, a city council that's, that's considering one of these. Um, I do run a faith-based organization, but that's kind of irrelevant to what I'm going to say. I read through the, the, uh, the ordinance language, and I just want to make sure that this is designed to make sure that, um, a business or a business owner would not be discriminated against because of their sexual orientation. Is that correct?
Pretty much.
Okay. Then you must then concede the point that this ordinance would penalize a gay bar owner who chose to hire a gay bartender because he believed that would best serve his patrons. This ordinance makes that illegal, correct?
Potentially.
Yes. This goes two ways. I believe that a gay bar owner in, in Buchanan or anywhere in the state should be left alone to, to run his or her business however she sees fit to best serve her or his patrons. This steps onto, uh, free enterprise. I, I have no business, a council doesn't have any business, a mayor doesn't have any business telling a gay bar owner that they can't hire a gay bartender. This is, this is egregious. America gives us room to have diversity, and we celebrate diversity. That, that second, that second post there on the sign says inclusive. We must be inclusive of diversity, especially diversity of thought. I must be able to think differently than you and live in Buchanan and run my business and continue to think differently than you and not do it in fear of unjust government persecution because my thoughts are diverse from yours. When I've, like I've spoken in many of these, and I was almost moving to tears with Mr. Skinner. I've never met him. Um, had no idea how old you were. I've heard many, many presentations on these. And though we probably likely disagree on many other points of politics, but I have never heard such a moving and sincere presentation. Again, my heart goes out to you and your family. To be here says an awful lot about your character and how much you care about the city. And I'm sure your intentions, Mr. Mayor, were, were good. I'm sure they were good. But the, the language in this says that upon first offense, you are the initial point of contact. So in a sense, you'll be the sole arbiter of whether or not a person is found in violation of this ordinance. I can't imagine, I, I have a personal relationship with the city attorney here. I'm disappointed that he, that he's not. I'm disappointed that he's not here. Was in communication with him a little bit earlier, sitting there. I cannot believe that he would have approved that.
It was his language.
It is unconstitutional in several categories. So your ordinance right now, and Ms. Alba, your heart is apparent to everybody. We don't want to see anybody picked on. We don't want to see children disadvantaged and treated in any way. And Councilman Thomas, I would have been the first one down that hall with you to defend whoever that young person was that was being physically assaulted, regardless of why. And I would do it today for anybody in this room. And we have to find a way to have diverse ideas. I want to run my business according to my conscience. You run your gay bar according to your conscience. And I'm going to respect you, and you're going to respect me. But what this ordinance does is give a legal hammer to one side to smash the other when they don't like how they're living out their lives through their business. That's what this does. And so your first presentation, as you were reading along, I thought, man, this place has it together. All of the things that you guys have accomplished and you're about to accomplish in the next year, I went to line by line, and I was like, wow, this is so much more organized and prepared than many of the cities that we go to in West Virginia. And then at the end, you said, "We will not tolerate those who divide us." And then you threw a big boulder into the lake and caused ripples everywhere by saying, "We will not be tolerant of those who have diverse views from us and operate their businesses according to that." And that broke my heart. I thought, oh, man, you almost had it. This almost was like the city council of the state. And then we throw that in. And look, how long has it been since those rooms have been this full? This is a divisive topic that should be addressed down at the state legislature or in Congress. But in all likelihood, it's going to be decided this summer by the United States Supreme Court. I know you referenced Obergefell, but in Baronel Stutzman versus the state of Washington, we have a flower shop owner who had same-sex-attracted employees many years, dozen employees, had served a same-sex couple for years, sent him flowers back and forth with these two gentlemen. One of them walked in one day and said, "Did you see on Facebook? I got engaged." She says, "Yes, I saw that." He says, "I want you to do my flowers for me." She is a devout person of faith. And she said, "Rob, you know I love you, but I can't violate my conscience and participate in your sacred ceremony. But here's three other vendors just right down the road would be happy to do this for you." And gave out that number. They went home, put it on Facebook. The state attorney general got ahold of it. They sued her. They're threatening to take, she just has a little trailer and a few cows. They're going to take her farm. They're going to take her husband's retirement. These two people in their seventies are going to be thrown out to the street. These are not victims, Ms. Mayor, they're not. LGBT. As you stand here, am I gay?
How do we know?
We don't know. And the Supreme Court's decision specifically in 1964 as regards to the Civil Rights Act expressly point to immutable traits. Most everybody in here, without guessing too hard, can guess I'm male. It's an immutable trait, I can't hide that. I'm also Caucasian. Very hard, not as hard, but still hard to hide that. I know that two members of this council are very likely female. And nobody else. Those are immutable traits that the Supreme Court has said, this is what the civil rights is about. You can't turn down a black person because they have a trait that's immutable. It cannot be silenced, you see it. And so from across the room, I could discriminate against them. And we outlaw that. But in the city of Charleston, West Virginia, the first city who passed one of these. A small business owner, didn't have a college degree, worked in a fast-food restaurant, worked her way up, got her own little fast-food store. Then over the years, she got married and she expanded. Now she has 25 fast-food stores in West Virginia. And in 2016, an employee was fired for harassing another employee. He was terminated, had to be, caught on camera. He was so mad that he would lose his job. Went and got an attorney and sued the business owner claiming he was gay and that he was fired because he was gay. How do you disprove that this gentleman was gay? He got a $50,000 settlement. But that wasn't good enough. Wasn't good enough. His attorney said, "This is a goldmine. These ordinances are legal liability goldmines. There's got to be others that have been discriminated. See if you can go find them." He went and found five females who magically overnight weren't L, weren't G, they magically became Bs, bisexuals overnight, though most of them already had boyfriends. They all joined the lawsuit. And then there was a threat. "If you fight us on this, we'll blast you in the media. All of your 25, you know, food chains will come underneath the sword of Damocles. Don't you dare fight us." And their corporate office forced them into a $500,000 settlement. That store then could not exist. Seventeen people lost their jobs. This ordinance is so vaguely written, anybody can magically become a member of the L or the G or the B or the T or the Qs or the As. Do any of you even know what A stands for? Or I?
Tell us.
Tell us.
If the council doesn't know this, you can't vote on this.
That's right.
Anybody can just magically claim to be in this group because it's not an immutable trait. It's behavior-based.
Yes.
And though there have been people that have spoke and said, "Hey, we're in support of gay, straight, and all that," there's no such thing as a straight person. Nowhere in the world. And there is no such thing as a gay person. There's just persons and human behavior. And some behavior we endorse. Some behavior we choose not to endorse, depending on our own individual rights. This ordinance says if you diverge from my opinion on this in the workplace, you refuse to acknowledge biology as a business owner and say, "Listen, I hired you as a male, and even though you show up now and you're wearing a miniskirt and high heels and lipstick, I'm not going to refer to you as she or her. I'm not going to do it." The First Amendment to the Constitution says, "We may not force a person to say words." This is a violation of that and invites a lawsuit. Ms. Mayor, this doesn't help anybody. And in fact, the way it's written, it'd likely get you sued. So to be intellectually honest, this isn't a good way to solve our differences. We need to find ways to love one another, even if we don't necessarily like one another. But this isn't the way to do it. And so I'm going to encourage those four of you that have said no and the two of you that said you're for it. My words are irrefutable. This isn't a good way to do it. Let's find a different way. And I believe we can do it without legislation. Thank you very much.
Hi, everybody. I didn't really come with a prepared speech, but I can speak from the heart and I believe what I think is ethically acceptable. And I just briefly want to tell you a small story that has impacted me, my life, and not just my life, but that of a family member. About 10 years ago, I was here in town shopping with my little sister after plowing snow and mowing lawns trying to save up to buy her a dress. She wanted to go to this dance. And I'm the oldest of eight. My mother was fairly ill, didn't have a lot of money to give to help for this. So I did what I could as a big brother. I walk into this pageant shop and I wanted to buy her a gown. Nothing revealing. She was young. I'm a good 15 years older than her. I walk in and she finds the dress she wants, and I still needed a little bit more money. So I went and I worked. And just in the nick of time, I got enough. Finally got enough to get her this dress that she really wanted. Shared a picture of it to mom and grandma. So my partner and I went back to get this dress. And she would not sell me this dress. It was up to my mother or a woman to help buy a dress for my little sister. So heartbroken, this girl walked out of this pageant store with no dress. Her dreams, hopes, what was so big to her at this time, crushed, so innocent she was, is. And to this day, I still have this ache that I wish that I or somebody else could have stepped up to get this dress. And there was nothing, there is nothing in place to take up, to fill that void. And to this day, she still cannot wrap her head around the fact that, you know, somebody would not sell us this dress because I was gay, because I am gay. I don't see how this is beneficial not to accept this ordinance, to not be turned away because the dress wasn't for me. It was for my little sister. And because of ignorance and because of hate, I don't know. We, that little girl still today, and today I still feel bad for not being able to help her that day. I even sent my brother, who is straight, back to get this dress. And still was not sold. Was not sold because this lady knew that it was for me to buy for my sister, for whom to buy for our sister. So what is in place to protect me there, to protect my sister? She had nothing to do with my sexuality. She had nothing to do with any of this. She just wanted a dress. And a friend of this woman and her business is here on council tonight. It's just sad to think that anybody would turn anybody away for any reason if there is no harm there. No harm done. There are no ill intentions. But a little girl's dreams were crushed. And I hope that she can still sleep well tonight, even after a decade of doing that. I have nothing more to say. I am all for this ordinance. Please help. Help us.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Are you using a different order as opposed to the order which signed up?
Going right down the list.
Okay. Can we do a checklist to make sure everyone who wanted to sign up and be on the list is on the list?
Next up is going to be Jessica Scott. And then it's Angela Ehret, Matthew Wood, Justin Seibert, Kayden Cowherd, Billy Wolf, Natasha Stone, Matt Turner, and Robert Coniston.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate it.
So next up, on the list, Jessica Scott. Hi, Jessica.
Hi, I'm Jessica Scott. I live in the next county over. I work in Buchanan. So I spend more hours of my life in Buchanan than I do in Elkins. I eat lunch here most days. I eat dinner here most days. I spend a lot of money in Buchanan and a lot of time. And I do work here in addition to a church in Clarksville. So I also spend time in the church. That seems to be a credential for folks here. So I appreciate your consideration for business folks, business owners. I appreciate that you have empathy, has empathy with business owners, many of you who have spoken on the council. You know, as mostly a consumer and an employee, I would ask that you also have some empathy for those of us who work and who, you know, shop in Buchanan as well or who rent or who want to buy property or who want to otherwise stay in Buchanan, that there be some protection for those folks in addition to the folks who own businesses. I think this is a multifaceted issue. And it's not only business owners it will affect, but also their patrons. I know a lot of lesbian, gay, and transgender folks in Buchanan. I myself belong to this community. I think that every one of us, several of the folks who spoke from their position as religious leaders or otherwise affiliated with the church also spoke to their desire not to be discriminated against. So I think that that's a desire that we share. Some folks already have that protection. There's an exemption in this particular ordinance that protects religious leaders who don't want to provide services to LGBT folks. There is protection for religion in the federal law that protects other, that several of you have already referenced. And so we're the group that doesn't already have that protection. And as folks who live in a community, as folks who work in a community, as folks who also are consumers in the community, we also would like to have those kinds of protections. Everybody here has spoken to a desire not to be discriminated against. We share that desire. And this doesn't offer us any more or fewer protections than other folks who are already protected under Title VII, which is the nondiscrimination, federal nondiscrimination law, already have. So I appreciate that the city of Buchanan has considered this. I think that, you know, all of us deserve to be free of the fear that we could be kicked out of our housing, that we could be fired from our jobs because of some trait about us, whether you believe that it's immutable or not. And I think that people who live in Buchanan and are part of the LGBT community deserve that as much as people who live anywhere else in Charleston or New York. And I just wanted to be on the record, I know several of you have already spoken about your views around the ordinance, but I just wanted to be on the record supporting that ordinance and hoping that it could work toward all members of the Buchanan community and of our state feeling valued in the places where we live and work and go to school. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. Angela Ehret.
I've prepared my questions and made copies for everybody. I'll probably add live along the way. But there's also another information that I won't go over. And I just would like to thank Mr. Witt for being here. I follow him on Facebook. And thank you, sir, for being here and your abilities to interpret what we've got before us here. I'd like to thank city council for having this meeting. However, it being cloak and dagger and done at the last minute does not bode well for what the council has done in regards to that. I'd like to also remind the mayor that he is the mayor of all the people of the city of Buchanan, not just a few. I'd also like to tell you that I come here in a position of love, being a Christian and a business owner within the city limits and also having a Christian magazine. I have friends and family who are both in the LGBTQ society. You probably would like to say it. We treat them, they're different. We have family reunions constantly. We love one another because that's what family does. Has nothing to do with their behavior. And these are just three questions that I'm going to kind of go through. The first one is addressing Mr. Andrew Schneider, who was here. Without any rebuttal information when he was here, I don't remember seeing anything if there was. So he was here for a free-for-all to give information to the council. And Mr. Schneider, who is the executive director of Fairness, West Virginia, stated that there has been only two cases brought in Charleston, West Virginia. Since I wrote this, I now find out there is more. So please note that this agreement with my notes. But he stated that since the ordinance passed unanimously in August of 2007 in Charleston, at that time, there were a total of nine cities in 2007 that had this ordinance. It now stands at 11. And if you look at the last page of that packet I gave, it gives you a map of the places that they have targeted with this ordinance. It now stands at 11. And of course, starting out this year on the third day, which a lot of good things happen on the third day, so I think it's providential, on January 8th, this will also be before the council. It just passed in Fairmont in November. It just passed in Fairmont in November. But does not this same example that there were only two occasions from 2007 to 2018, this example from Mr. Schneider gave at the November 2008 meeting here at this council, it punctuates the burden of additional ordinances which take time and resources to establish, which are paid by taxpayers. Are they not frivolous? Buchanan adopted the non-discrimination resolution in 2013. However, the First Amendment of the Constitution already covers these issues and since the ordinance will be imposed only on businesses within the city limit, as I understand it, because of the actions of the ordinance will be imposed on only businesses within the city and because of the actions, an elected city council, reminded elected city council, places no burden on the city and are to be tried within the public court system, why is the city even engaging in what I will call an anti-religion agenda? Now, I only say this, an anti-religion agenda, because Mr. Schneider himself, his comments, if you will go watch it, do not allude to that conclusion, but he directly states it and reiterates it during his presentation in November 2018. So when Mr. Schneider came before this council, he presented it as an anti-religious ordinance. That's not inclusive by any means. To reiterate the fact that there was only two that he mentioned between 2007 and 2018, uh, that's only one occurrence, uh, by his account, we know there are more accounts, by his account, that's only an occurrence within 2,800.5 days. So the percentile of these problems are minute. That's less than 1% in a 365-day period. My statistics came from the Gazette as well. So we're giving rise to a problem that is less than 1% over homelessness, feeding people, dealing with veteran problems. We're legislating morality for a select few. I have no problem with a minority. I would be right there with Dave Thomas in that hallway because I cannot stand injustice. This ordinance is unjust. Mr. Schneider also was asked by Mr., by Councilman Rieger, how the ordinance would affect churches. He stated churches, let me adjust, he stated churches are not affected by this law, and I quote, you can go back and write, I do quotes all the time with my magazine, this is exact, "Churches are not affected at all. Churches are not considered public accommodations. They are completely free of this type of regulation and I would never want to compel a church to do something in contrary to its teachings." However, after being asked by Mr. Rieger this second question, what if that church is a registered nonprofit? The answer from Mr. Schneider changed and was this, and I quote, "Well, again, if it's the church," is what he's speaking of, "if it's under the public accommodation that does businesses, that does business, that profits in the community, that they are subject to the public accommodation laws." Let's be very, everyone should look up public accommodation laws. I mean, if you're setting up a business, I continue the quote, "I mean, if you're setting up a business that serves the general public, not just your faith," pause, then he states, "members of your faith, then you become a public accommodation." Does anyone in this room know what a public accommodation is?
No.
Okay. I think this is also important as a driver, I continue the quote, "for ultimately the state to do the right thing." This is continuing his quote, "But we need the municipalities to do them first because the state and the federal government are not in a position to take this up at any time soon." Do you understand what he's doing? They have flipped the, they have flipped the process to get this to be a federal mandate upon churches who will be considered nonprofit and this will come after. They have flipped it so that the municipalities will now take this upon themselves, burden the cost and shoulder the blame and the division across the state of West Virginia to get enough people in compliance with this to take it to the state level and then to the federal level. They reversed the process. I continue his quote. I'll, I'll read the last sentence so it makes more sense. "I think this is also important as a driver for ultimately the state to do the right thing, but we need the municipalities to do them first because the state and federal government are not in any position to take this up at any time soon. And should we deny our LGBT citizens the protections, these basic fundamental protections in waiting for the federal government or the state to act?" And I say, no, because some of these protections are extremely serious. He goes on to say, "We require..." God, we require laws that seek good behavior. Okay? The definition of the public accommodation law, public accommodation is US law and are generally defined as facilities, both public and private, used by the public. Would a church that lends out its sanctuary for, uh, a secular group for a daycare be now a public accommodation? Oh, wait a minute. Yes, it would. Under US federal law, public accommodations must be accessible to the disabled and may not discriminate on the basis of race, color, religion, or national origin. And that definition is from Wikipedia, if you'd like to go look it up and get more information. Yep. Also, West Virginia Code, Article 11, which is current law in the state of West Virginia, under Section 201A, states equal opportunity in the areas of employment, this is state law, there's no need for city law. Equal opportunity in the areas of employment at public accommodations, which you would now be underneath this ordinance, is hereby declared to be a human right or civil right of all persons without regard to race, religion, color, national origin, ancestry, sex, age, blindness, or disability. Does that not cover pretty much everything anybody would ever want to be covered under? Oh, but there's more. Section 201A of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the injunctive relief against discrimination in places of public accommodation. This is one thing they didn't recognize when they wrote this or when Mr. Schneider came. Public accommodations is what you would become. They didn't want you to know that. But as the Lord needs. All persons shall be entitled to the full and equal employment of the goods, services, facilities, and privileges, advantages, and accommodations of any place of public accommodation as defined in this section without discrimination or segregation on the ground of race, color, religion, or national origin. Those three things cover everything without there being an ordinance in Buchanan. Now, let me ask you this question concerning the way churches and faith-based businesses are going to be affected by this ordinance and how Mr. Schneider, who is not here to defend himself, and I realize that, however, I take liberty because there is no one here to rebut what he said. Mr. Schneider is defining them as public accommodations, even though an individual must choose to attend any events that would be deemed public accommodations by the church, which should be added to that right there. If you needed to have your tonsils out, let's go here. Would you go to a mechanic or a librarian? Anybody? Anybody? No? No. You would go to someone trained as a surgeon that could remove the tonsils. Now, would you go to a Buddhist to find out about Christ? Anybody?
No.
Uh, would you go to an atheist to find out about Muhammad?
No.
No. Then help me understand how hiring someone to work in a faith-based business or a church, whether for profit or nonprofit, that did not represent the very ideals and precepts contained therein, that profit or nonprofit, can be considered anything other than a front of the way liberty, of the very liberties, the First Amendment, the freedom of religion, speech, press, and assembly, the right of petition. The West Virginia Code I just read you part of and the Civil Rights Act I just read you of offers all citizens, these three cover all citizens, not only of Upstate County, but of West Virginia and of the entire country.
With all due respect, can I be subsumed in a time limit?
You were able to finish yours.
Yeah.
That's fair. There were plenty of people who took a long time. She can continue.
Three and a half minutes is what I limited myself to.
That was your first choice.
I have facts. I'm, I'm coming from a Christian standpoint, but I have facts in front of me. That's all I'm doing. I'm not coming to you any other way. Question three. Thank you again, Mr. Witt, because I didn't know if this was appropriate for this, this question, this third question, if Mr. Schneider was not here. But I'll read it more as a statement than as a question to him. "I wonder if Fairness, West Virginia, would be able to hire an ordained minister following the principles of the Pentecostal faith or a graduate of Liberty University to volunteer in their organization since they are defined open to everyone who believes in the funnel, in fundamental fairness." Um, oh, wait a minute, I apologize, I read that incorrectly. "I wonder if Fairness, West Virginia, will be able to hire an ordained minister following the principles of the Pentecostal faith or a graduate of Liberty University to volunteer in their organization since they are defined as an 8133 nonprofit organization, but not defined as a public accommodation entity, and are open to everyone who believes in fundamental fairness. I would like to know what the definition of fairness is, because it seems they are defining what fairness is and what discrimination is, instead of going by the laws of the Supreme Court and what is on the books. The Equality Federation, which the Fairness, or the Fairness, West Virginia is a proud member of, states on their website, 'We don't stop until all LGBT people are fully empowered and represented in their communities and experience fully equality in their lives.' Unfortunately, everyone in this room, this is not attainable for any person on the earth, no matter what your sexual orientation is. It is not going to happen for anyone." I would just like to also state that, um, as Mr. Witt said, turn this back on yourselves because if you do fundraising and have a, a business, uh, Fairness, West Virginia would have some kind of event in their building and make a profit from it and nonprofit, they would then fall under the pub, public accommodations shelter as well because they are registered as an 8133 religious grant writing organization. Thank you. Good job.
I'd like to, uh, say hello to everybody. Good evening. Um, you know, uh, me and my wife talked about this at length today. Um, you know, this is a sensitive subject for a lot of people. Um, you know, it, a long time ago, I used to find myself with prejudices. Um, we grew up in a community that there was prejudices at times. Um, you know, unfortunately, we can try to deny that, but it is the truth. Um, you know, but over the years, I've grown to know a group of people, of people I've worked with professionally. Um, I have three beautiful daughters. Um, my son-in-law is Mexican. My second son-in-law is black. He serves our United States Navy and has been awarded several medals. He's a wonderful man. And my third youngest daughter is her husband's Caucasian. So, you know, I've learned to grow past those things, but, you know, I, I also tried to study this wording of this, uh, 434 proposal and, uh, you know, it's leading to someplace that we don't need to go. Um, I'm gonna be quick, I'm gonna read this right here and then I'll, I'll, I'll be done. Religious freedom is a legal right that flows from the moral right to conscience. It is rooted in the idea as that humans, we have the obligation to seek the truth and to follow truth as we understand it. Conscious rights go to the core of what is to be a human's person. The capacity to act based not only on desires or instincts, but judgments about what is good and what is bad, what is right and what is wrong, and the moral responsibility that is inseparable from that capacity to force a person to act contrary to their conscience, to force him or her to violate their moral integrity is an assault on that person. Okay? For Christians, acting against one's conscience is not only about a violation of moral integrity, but an act of sin. The Apostle Paul says, "For whatever does not proceed from faith is sin." Okay? If we do something that we think is sin, even if we are misformed, we are guilty of sin, we are guilty of doing something we believe to be wrong, we act against our conscience, that is a very important principle for, for a Christian. It's neither right nor safe to act against your conscience. A primary reason Christians consider religious freedom so important is because that we do not have to believe the state should have the authority to force us to engage in sinful acts. The free exercise clause of the First Amendment was adopted to protect our conscience from government intrusion. Okay? And I believe that that's what's happening here. Now, you know, a lot of these pastors that are in here would welcome each and every person into their church. I don't hate anybody, but I feel, I, I, I'm offended when you tell me I have to accept a certain way of life and I have to accept a certain thing, just like you might be offended as well. So, thank you.
Justin Seibert, I hope I pronounced that correctly.
You didn't, but no one ever does.
Seibert or Seibert?
Seibert. It is, it's okay. This will be much longer than everyone else's, but if you try to interrupt me, I'll just talk over you. Sit back, relax, it's gonna be a long night. First off, I'd like to discuss how everyone's presenting a false dilemma this evening. This is not scripted. Just because, let's just say this doesn't get adopted tonight, that doesn't mean before tonight, there was rampant discrimination within the LGBTQ community. That is a false dilemma, is a lie. We have to reject it. It goes against reason. As you said, my name is Justin Seibert. I am a veteran of two combat deployments to Afghanistan. I have watched my friends die for this country, whether it be right or wrong. I'm a business owner. I've been in the technology field for 10 years, working in and out of Silicon Valley. I run Bastion Services Solutions. I do business from Morgantown, Fairmont, Clarksville, Bridgeport, Weston, and I had hoped to move into Buchanan, hopefully working on a grant with the Broadband Authority. I came here to speak for myself and others who hold similar beliefs, creeds, and logic as it pertains to the sexual orientation and gender identity ordinance presented here today. Despite cheap accusations from various advocacy groups, I and others do not oppose, which I do, to be clear, this out of lack of compassion, empathy, or concern. Every person in this room, in this world, is a person of inherent worth and dignity created in the image of God. No one should ever be harassed, mocked, or abused because of their sexual orientation, their gender identity, or gender expression. The proposed protections would establish, the proposed protections you are talking about tonight with this ordinance, would establish a legal precedent that would, as Dr. Robert P. George, Professor of Jurisprudence at Princeton, says, "Violate the fundamental right of conscience." It does so by creating legal privileges for new protected classes based not on objective traits that I can see, but subjective identities that I could poss, I can't know. The proposal to create new protections will not result what advocates claim is fairness for all. Instead, it will penalize and be weaponized against many residents and business owners who believe that we are created male and female and that male and female are created for each other. Speaking of Alfred Gilbert versus Hodges, uh, convictions that Justice Anthony Kennedy and the Supreme Court of the United States recognize are held in good faith and reasonable sincere people here and throughout the world. So they're not just crazy beliefs, they're not theoretical, they're not in our heads, they're not subjective. It is of the utmost importance that we leave people free to engage in actions based on the rights of conscience and conviction that we are created male and female and that male and female are created for each other. Here's a hard truth. Sexual orientation and gender identity law ban disagreement on LGBTQ issues and sexuality disagreements. They ban it. It essentially bans free thought. Of course, those are not the exact words used, but when sexual orientation and gender identity are elevated to protected classes in the anti-discrimination law, that is the effect the government policy has. But not, and I'm saying this really loud, not every disagreement is discrimination. It's very simple. Different categories. Everyone here is talking about categories. We'll use some logic categories here. Disagreement is- some logic categories here. Disagreement is not discrimination. And our laws should not presume otherwise. In fact, in the far more liberal UK, a recent ruling from their Supreme Court, recent by I mean like three months ago, made clear such distinctions between disagreement, discrimination, and the right of conscience. They quoted our Supreme Court in doing so. Where enacted, and this is not my opinion, this is fact, sexual orientation and gender identity laws are frequently used as swords to persecute people with unpopular beliefs rather than shields to protect people from just discrimination. Sexual orientation and gender identity laws treat reasonable actions as if discriminatory. Ironically, these laws, they're supposed to stop discrimination, lead to more discrimination from the prime monopoly on threat of force, the government. My goodness. So, for example, if a baker creates custom wedding cakes for marriages but will not design or create them from same-sex unions, that is considered discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation, even though that baker may serve or employ homosexual people or trans people, as has been the case with many of the prior cases in Supreme Court. If a Catholic adoption agency works to find permanent homes for orphans where they will be raised by a married mom and dad but will not place children with two moms and no dad or two dads and no mom, that is considered discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation. If a small business provides health insurance that covers double breast removal in the case of breast cancer, but it will not remove the breasts for a woman wanting transition to a man, that is discrimination on the basis of gender, identity, and sexual orientation. That is insane. You do not have the authority to put that on your citizens. More importantly, it's not gonna get you the competent, inclusive, and transparent and efficient government that you want, taking care of your citizens. It just won't do it. Under sexual orientation and gender identity laws, the government penalizes these reasonable policies I just mentioned on disputed questions as if, as if they were discriminatory. Under sexual orientation and gender identity laws, the assumption of the law is that there is no disagreement on the various theories on sexual identity, whereas the reality is, even within the LGBTQ community, there is vast disagreement on sexual orientation and gender identity and how that manifests in reality. There's no disagreement within the community itself. How are you gonna propose a law that assumes there is? It goes against the laws of reason. Furthermore, federal and state laws sufficiently protect individuals from employment discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin, and protect those civil liberties which are recognized by the constitutions of West Virginia and the United States of America. Thus, this proposed ordinance and amendment will threaten civil rights of Buchanan residents who believe basic truths about the human condition. These beliefs are not few and far between nor specific to only Christianity. They have been articulated by ancient Greek and Roman philosophers, members of the Abrahamic faith, and secular people who believe in the freedom of inquiry. Christians, Muslims, and people of all faiths, or none at all, will be at risk. This will affect charity organizations, small businesses, and a variety of civil institutions that provide much-needed social services to the Buchanan and Upshore County proper area. Fairness West Virginia has promised this ordinance will bring you economic prosperity. I know they have because they've done it in every single city they went to before. They went to every impoverished city in West Virginia, cities that are low in hope because we don't know what to do with our problems, and they said, "Hey, we'll get you more jobs if you pass this ordinance." It's a lie. It's a bold-faced lie, as Mr. Skinner, is that your last name? Made very clear with his statistics. It's not an opinion. It's a fact. Cities have lost populations after passing this ordinance, and populations have risen where government has, you know, I'm not gonna go there, but where the West Virginia University, Mylan, and so on and so forth have provided employment. In the last 10 years, unlike any other city in central West Virginia, this city has had an economic boom. It's been insane to watch from a distance. I, I remember going to C.J. Maggi's, right, with my wife's parents, and I asked, that's where I asked them if I could marry their daughter. I remember coming down here to high school where I went to Bridgeport High School. Don't hate me. I came down here all the time to hang out here because it was so much better at Bridgeport. You guys are doing great. You don't need this ordinance for economic prosperity. That is a lie. It stands against the test of basic logic and reason. Everyone in here acknowledges that, acknowledges basic logic and reason. Don't buy the sales pitch. History has taught us the truth about these ordinances. We've watched the masterpiece Bake the Case case, Bake the Cake case unfold where a city weaponized the law against a well-respected member of the community who had no issue serving people of all creeds, sexual expression, or otherwise, however, because he wouldn't violate his conscience, and they attempted to crucify him, and they're doing it again now. Overall, ordinances like these will hurt the economy and social capital of this city, which is the foundation of a healthy economy and thriving community. All the while, attempting to fix problems that are best solved not by more laws or regulations, but free, unimpeded human interaction and social exchange. Thank you for your time.
Kayden, you're up. And on deck is Billy Wolf.
Thank you so much. Well, you know, today we've heard a lot of things from Jewish people who have been behind this podium and have spoken their thoughts from both sides. I will tell you that one of the things that we have all heard, our various emotional arguments that have been made here, personal stories that have been expressed, presented to all of you, cases that have allegedly potentially happened in this community, but we have no way of verifying. And I've got to tell you that I could personally tell you absolutely horrific things that have happened to me because of my defense of the biblical definition of marriage that is so absolutely horrific that for many of you it'd be unfathomable. And I gotta say that you wanna talk about being attacked, I've received thousands of death threats on a national level because I simply disagree with what the world says and I believe in the Bible. I have been chastised. My life has been threatened. I have been repetitively told to commit suicide by LGBT activists, many of which are in this community. I have witnessed friends of mine that have been bullied at the high school because they have simply discussed in a current event class, "I'm sorry, but I disagree. I believe in what the Bible says." They've been ridiculed, some of which have been physically attacked, and the same people that physically attacked them have threatened to physically attack me. That's how I found out about it. The hate is on both sides at times, but I want to tell you that this ordinance solely seeks to harass, intimidate, bully, and quite frankly, encourage a legislative assault on believers of faith while in the context of this ordinance, it says that it is to prevent people from being harassed, intimidated, bullied, and assaulted based upon orientation or gender identity. This is not protecting anybody. This is not seeking to prevent bullying, but rather it's providing a bully pulpit to people who wish to use it against the body of Christ and anyone who disagrees with them. Now, listen, all of us should support the Constitution of the United States. Every single one of you up there said that you support it. All of us believe that regardless of if you're gay, straight, black, white, whatever you may be, we are all entitled to certain rights, but those are only the rights that are listed in the Bill of Rights, nothing less and nothing more. When the local government begins to say that they can establish the set of their own rights without basing it on any substantive cause except their own personal opinion, it is not based on anything that is substantial in order to turn it into legislation. And, you know, one of the things that is important to understand is what we believe as members of the body of Christ. When you look around, we have pastors here from churches all throughout this area representing hundreds of people, even to the degree of thousands of people that live in this city, all voicing their expressions against this ordinance because we know that it's not only going to impact the pastors, but it's going to impact the members of the congregations. And they're defending the rights of their congregations, and I applaud them for being here. Thank you. But you have to understand what we believe as Christians because I think that there are also a lot of misconceptions as to what we believe, where it has been viewed as what we believe is hateful, it's bigoted, and it is anything but. First of all, you gotta understand what we believe sin is. We believe that the wages of sin is death, meaning that it's harmful behavior that results in the suffering and eternal separation from God, but it's, but the gift of God that was provided to us through Jesus Christ is eternal life. So, we also read in Proverbs, chapter 28, verse 13, that people who conceal their sins will not prosper, but if they confess and turn from them, they will receive mercy, mercy from God. We read in Isaiah 59, verse 2, that it's your sins that have separated you, that have cut you from God because of your sins, he has turned you away and can't listen to you. How can we as Christians who love all of humanity encourage and enable others to practice behavior that results in the harm and suffering and ultimately the eternal separation from God? We can't as devout members of our faith. We can in good consciousness, in good conscience, assist others who engage in practices that we believe is dreadfully harmful to them. It hurts their well-being on the earth in addition to ultimately resulting in unattained salvation. That's what we believe. Our faith has taught this for over 2,000 years. Ephesians, chapter 5, verse 11, Mayor McCollough, says that "We can take no part in the fruitless works of darkness, but rather recruit them." This means that if you are Christian and you own a print shop, you can't in good conscience create posters and, and things promoting different acts of homosexuality or things for gay pride celebrations because we feel in good conscience that it is promoting homosexual practices. But if they would come to us and say, "Hey, I want you to make a banner for my birthday celebration," that Christian printer would most definitely print that. In the overwhelming majority of circumstances, they would most definitely do that. And likewise, I don't think that a gay print shop should be forced to print signs for Westboro Baptist that says that God hates and you know the word that they use. That's not, that's bigoted. That is hateful. That is anything but the love that Christ taught. It is to, quite frankly, and all the ministers will agree, it's blasphemy what they say. We don't agree with that. Jesus taught us to love everybody. That's what we do, but at the same time, that's the reason why we oppose sin. We cannot say in good conscience that we're going to, you know, bake a same-sex wedding cake, going all the way up to printing homosexual pride posters for, you know, Christian printers. We can't do that in good conscience because we feel that we are enabling someone to sin. And here's the thing that is really concerning for us. If we comply with the city and we assist in enabling people to sin, we risk eternal consequences ourselves. Is that right, ministers? In Ezekiel, chapter 3, verse 18 and 19, God said, "If I warn the wicked, saying that you are under the penalty of eternal death, but you failed to deliver the warning, they will die in their sins." And then it says that "I will hold you, every single one of us, accountable for their deaths. But if you warn them and they refuse to repent and keep on sinning, they will die in their sins, but you have saved yourself because you obeyed them." And the reality of it is, is that we quite frankly fear God more than we fear all of you. We have to be loyal to our faith. We can't be forced to violate it. 1 Timothy, chapter 2, verse 4, says that God desires everybody to be saved. He wants everybody to come to a saving knowledge of Jesus Christ. He loves everybody, desiring all to make it to heaven. But this is why he opposes sin. Sin was originally created to separate us from him. And that's why as Christians, we cannot support sin. We don't want anyone to be separated from God. We don't want anyone to engage in harmful behavior that is going to even potentially not only result in negative consequences on this earth, but in eternity. Therefore, by disobeying God's word, we would be deliberately rejecting Him because of John 1:1, which says, "In the beginning was the word, and the word was with God, and the word was God." If we reject what God's word says, we ultimately reject Him. And as devout believers of our faith, we cannot do that. We will not sin. We will not assist and encourage people that we deeply love and that we deeply care about to engage in self-destructive behavior that has not only consequences on this earth, but eternal consequences? This is what all of us believe as Christians. Is that right? This is what ministers believe. This is basic Christian theology, again, has been taught for thousands of years. And the interesting thing is that the American Center for Law and Justice says that employers can run their businesses with godly principles and employees cannot be forced to act in a manner that conflicts with their religious beliefs. That's according to federal and state law presently. However, it says, according to federal law, that there is nothing that requires the workplace to be a religion-free zone, until now. If this ordinance passes tonight, it will attempt to limit the free exercise of religion, and it will say that freedom of religion stops at the steps of the church, that you cannot freely exercise your religion outside of the four walls of the church, which violates everything that we believe in as Christians because we believe that we're not only to be a Christian in the church, but also a Christian outside of it. This ordinance not only places our devout religious beliefs under scrutiny, but it violates our constitutional liberties. Robbie, you prevented, you presented, excuse me, an absolutely heartfelt remark, and especially knowing what you are going through right now and having had your aunt. I know that the burden on you this week has been absolutely tremendous, and I thank you so much for everything that you've done. And likewise, David Thomas, counseling, I really appreciate what you said. But the thing that we have to examine here is that the objection to this is not based upon approval or disapproval of homosexuality. It's not based upon approval or disapproval of practicing homosexuality, but what it is based on is defending people's religious liberty. It is based upon defending people's, not only their first amendment right, their 13th amendment right, it's about defending their constitutional liberties. And not to mention, all these states and all the municipalities that have enacted similar ordinances, what has happened? Is that there have been, there's court case after court case, for example, of a photographer over in New Mexico that was fined because this is a Christian photographer, was happy to make, it was happy to take pictures of birthday parties and any other celebration, but the same-sex couple came up to him and said, "We want you to take pictures at our gay wedding," and he said, "I'm sorry, I can't attend. I'm a Christian. It would violate my beliefs to be there." You know, I love you. I care about you, but when it comes to that specific event, I just can't do that. Any other event, it's fine, but that one, no. And they decided to sue this photography studio, and they ended up winning that case over in New Mexico because it violated the state's non-discrimination ordinance that, quite frankly, I have to say, this is even worse than the one that is proposed there. And this is going to have severe negative consequences. And tonight, I know that we have, in the past, had several Charleston lobbyists that have been here, expressing from Fairness West Virginia and so forth, many of which are here today, and they are urging you to vote in support of their special interests. The majority of people that you see in here that are in opposition of this ordinance are here, living in the community. We are locals. We aren't shipped in here from any other city. We are here because we are local members of this community. We are the ones who elect you to your position, and we're the ones who elect you out. And it's important for all of you to remember that because there have been similar situations where other councils have voted in support of this, and they have been ousted from office. You have to consider that politically in the consideration as politicians. It's just something that you have to do. And additionally, I've got to say this, that tonight you can either vote to appease the special interest of the liberal Charleston lobbyists that have approached you at trying to get your support, or you can vote against this ordinance, supporting the interests of your constituents who make up the local electorate, and in this case, the majority. I urge you to vote against this unconstitutional ordinance. Thank you so much.
I am one of the aforementioned outside usurpers here to try to make you ignore the interests of your constituents. I'm just kidding. My name's Billy Wolf, and I am a communication specialist with Fairness West Virginia. I don't really have a sermon to share with anyone, but I have maybe a few experiences to share. And I want to start, I've heard some... And I want to start, I've heard some insinuations that this was all rushed through in an effort to avoid dissent. Our own director is still on vacation and wasn't able to make it, so he's not here to discuss this either. I recently joined Fairness, West Virginia, a year ago, so I've not been here for all of our campaigns, not very many actually. I can say with relative certainty that we have never gone to a community and said, "If you pass this, you will get jobs, you will get more people moving in." What we've said is, West Virginia is hemorrhaging population. And study after study shows that young, educated people, they want to live in communities that they see as inclusive. They want to live in communities that they see as embracing modern progressive values and that it's not going to hurt to pass something like this. It's never going to hurt. As someone who, I'm 35 years old, I'm at the point now, a lifelong West Virginia resident, where practically all of my old friends have moved away. And when they talk to me, they tell me, "Why are you still there?" And I'm still here because this is my home, because I love it and because I love the people here. I can't say, I can't explain it beyond that. And because I want to see it do better. I'm someone who has faced physical violence because I'm gay. I'm someone who has faced, on two occasions, discrimination because I'm gay. One was more of a threat of discrimination. So it saddens me to see this. I'm appreciative of the council for taking this up, for considering it. But I'm saddened to see that people are not willing to listen to the other side, to hear the experiences of people who have experienced this kind of discrimination and who require protection from it. I also want to say to the lady here, I'm not at all familiar with what you're talking about as far as us being a religious nonprofit. We are a 501(c)(3) and a 501(c)(4), but I'm happy to exchange information with you and get you more information about it.
On your state secretary of state's office, you're listed as anyone?
That would be a mistake if we are listed in that way.
Since you need to talk to the secretary of state.
I don't have a whole lot more to say. It seems like minds are made up here. I do want to say that I've heard a lot of hypotheticals, like what this could possibly lead to. All I can tell you is, we have 11 communities in the state with these ordinances. They've been enforced twice. Once was a out-of-court settlement and once was a court hearing with a jury deciding that a person had in fact been discriminated against. That's it. Churches exist in these 11 communities who preach anti-LGBTQ messages. They are not punished. They are not hauled before the mayor and punished in some way by the government. They continue, as they should, to believe what they want to believe. I've also heard talk here tonight about homosexuality is wrong, it's destructive, it's terrible thing that we can't endorse and that's fine, you are entitled to those beliefs as well. I do want to say that when things like this come up and when they fail, the people who wish to inflict harm, the people who wish to flaunt their win, will do so. And it's my concern that in bringing this up and voting it down, you will be giving a green light to discrimination in Buchanan. And I worry about the people who will experience it. I do hope it's reconsidered one day, but thank you so much again for considering it and for trying to live up to being an inclusive community.
Hi everyone, I'm Natasha. I am also one of the, with myself, Billy and the Family Policy Council, one of the Charleston lobbyists that come down here, up here. So, we're all over here. But I've always really liked Buchanan. Growing up, I have come to Buchanan numerous times for summer youth celebration at West Virginia Wesleyan Church, West Virginia Wesleyan College, I'm sorry. It is a church camp for one week or did when I was in elementary school, middle school and high school. And the thing that I always thought of was how nice everyone in Buchanan was. Wesleyan was great. Everyone there made me feel welcome and made me feel like I belonged. And of course, all of the members of the congregation that came for SYC did the same thing. But even when we would go out to Buchanan proper, everyone, and this was when I was a teenager, everyone made me feel like this is the place I could live, this is the place I belong. And then when I was 16, I brought my girlfriend to SYC. We were both going to the church camp. And then I found that Wesleyan was still just as welcoming, just as friendly, and so were the ministers at SYC. Methodist preachers and reverends and ministers were 100% accepting. I noticed Buchanan was slightly less. And that's okay. I'm also one of the magical Bs, as Mr. Witt alluded to, though I have had boyfriends and I've had girlfriends. So, we do exist. Bisexual people date men and women. It's kind of the whole point of being bisexual. But I don't want to get too into the weeds on that. A couple of things I would like to bring up that I've heard is that a nondiscrimination ordinance is unconstitutional and the Supreme Court in the Masterpiece Kate Shop repeatedly affirmed municipal ordinances that municipalities have the right and were allowed to do this. If the Supreme Court says it's okay, I can't imagine it's unconstitutional. And if it was in fact the opinion of the current Supreme Court, because that decision came up with all current nine members, if that were, the prevailing attitude was it was unconstitutional, why would they say that in their statements? The fact that they may or may not be idiots is as may be, but they do in fact determine what is and what is not constitutional currently. They are the supreme law of the land and they have again affirmed this is not unconstitutional. Two, I won't get into the legal repercussions because my colleague Billy Wolf got into that pretty well, but I would like to address a few of the things that this lady here, and I'm sorry, your name escapes me.
Angela.
Angela, I would like to address a few of the things Angela said. Again, we are not an 8-0, I'm not sure what the number is.
It's 8-0, 3-3 and it's under religious ordinances. She's grant writing a new, then it goes to social advocacy.
We are in fact a 501(c)(3) and a 501(c)(4). I can't speak to what Mr. Schneider said at his last visit, but I can tell you that Fairness, West Virginia does employ at least one Christian member, and that is myself. And I am, I can't think of any other way to say it, but that I am disappointed in some of the things I've heard tonight. When I came out as bisexual, one of the first people I told was my pastor at my church, after my parents and some of my best friends. My pastor was the first person I told outside of a media family and incredibly close friends. And he didn't flinch. He was like, "We love you, we accept you and we want you to continue to be a member of our church." And as a 16-year-old, that was huge. That gave me the courage to continue to be a Christian throughout my adolescence.
Can I ask you though, the point that was, will you have a city ordinance?
Oh, we sure do.
Over Fairness, West Virginia, that will be penalized because, Fairness, West Virginia?
Let Natasha finish her statement.
Thank you, Mr. Rieger. And also, I would like to again thank Mr. McCauley, Mayor McCauley.
I'd just like to know if she did recognize me or I wouldn't have spoken.
Well, it was just to clarify anything. I would like to thank Mr. Rieger and for that, and also Mr. McCauley for bringing the ordinance up for discussion. It is not incredibly easy to be an LGBTQ West Virginian. I hear a lot of people talking, I can't attest to getting national death threats. I've never gotten national death threats. I've just gotten threatened with knives and then assaulted. So I can't tell you about.
How about I shut it? Please, please be respectful. Why don't you finish?
I lost that place, no, I'm sorry.
Pick your time.
Thank you. But it's not incredibly easy. And when I went to Morgantown last year, when we passed this ordinance in Morgantown, it helped. It made me feel like the city cared about me. And regardless of whether or not you feel that voting down an ordinance is saying, "We don't care," you can say that "We love you just the way you are, we just, you know, don't support this." On this side, it certainly feels like you're saying, "We don't want you and we don't love you." I know that may not be your prevailing thought. I know that may not be the thought of the ministers here who have said that we love everybody, but it's really hard to come to this and see people come out and say the things they've said and think that someone like me isn't welcoming us now. In closing, I'm just, the Jesus Christ that I know and love would never say some of the things I've heard tonight. Also, I would like to, as clarification, I heard a lot of references to the Old Testament, which is the domain of the Jewish faith, and I would like to point out that all three rabbis in the state of West Virginia have come out and said that there's nothing in the Torah, which would be the Old Testament, that says that this is bad or that we shouldn't pass nondiscrimination ordinances. In fact, every rabbi in the state is in support of passing nondiscrimination ordinances. So, I feel like that should be said as well. Thank you.
Next up is Night Turner.
I want to start with, I'm a little disappointed that we kind of voted first because I feel like I could have spent my night at home arguing about politics with strangers on Facebook and been just as effective. Which is, you know, I'm concerned that we're not going to change anybody's mind, it's just an opportunity to advance. And, you know, I could have done that while I was walking my dog. I live in a kind of strange intersectionality. Well, it's not that strange, there are 25 million of us. A middle-aged, fat, white, bald guy. I'm like the most privileged person on the planet. But I also belong to an unmarked, marginalized population. For over 20 years, I suffered through substance use disorder and I'm a person living in long-term recovery from that substance use disorder. And a lot of the things that I've heard tonight, especially, you know, things about the differences, and I disagree with what Mr. Rieger said about that you can't equate this with being black because your sexual orientation is an immutable trait. That's been, you know, American Psychological Association, all the medical community says that it's an immutable trait, nobody picks being gay or anything. In that spectrum. Why would anybody make that decision? Because it seems like it really sucks. You know, they face a lot of ill will. And I just want to go right because obviously Rudy knows I work in the substance abuse field, I'm from the National Institute on Drug Abuse. People who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual or transgender often face social stigma, discrimination and other challenges not encountered by people who identify as heterosexual. They also face a greater risk of harassment and violence. As a result of these and other stressors, sexual minorities are at an increased risk for various behavioral health issues. LGBTQ population is overrepresented in the addicted population at 200% to 300% of what they are in the general population. The variations depending on the exact orientation and age. You guys don't want to read 85, or hear me read 85 pages of those studies? It's all on NIH. Again, it's probably too late to tell you to go look that up. You know, and I was actually going to ask you guys to consider listening to the people because I work with a lot of these people and I hear the same stories that occurred from the impacted population here where they've been discriminated against. And we're all like, no, everybody loves each other here, nobody hates anybody, which is flipping amazing because I live here. I hear people call people faggot all the time. I hear that stuff. And now we're going to sit here and pretend it doesn't happen? It's a lie.
Oh, but people in this room, maybe outside, but not in here.
When discussing, you're talking about the immutable trait that Mr. Rieger and Mr. Witt both mentioned, you know, that made it sound like this is, I think there's, especially Mr. Witt, a little confusion about what immutable means. It's an unchanging over time, unable to be changed, immutable fact. People who have minority orientations can't just say, you know what, today, I'm going to be straight today, it's Thursday. That's not how that works. And for us to believe that it is, that these people make a conscious decision to be gay, it is our own imagination. It's, you know, roughly fear change. I also heard I'm irrefutable, that that was an irrefutable fact and I'm here to refute some of that stuff. A lot of the arguments that I've heard tonight remind me of, I always said one, Darryl, come you guys were, the lunch counter sit-ins. Some of these same arguments were made to defend segregation. And those laws started to be changed in municipalities. They started to be changed in Goldsboro, they started to be changed in Charlotte. They didn't start from the top down. It's really ironic when I hear somebody who's conservative say that we shouldn't be making local changes, that we should wait for the federal government to tell us what to do. Because that's complete contradiction to everything else they ever say. I firmly believe, I remember a lot of national organizations and they are driven by their members, they are driven by local groups. And it is a inverted pyramid power structure. It is not top down, it is bottom up. And to mend us from getting this far and even bringing up this topic and being able to discuss it. Yeah, I have heard a lot of misinformation right there. Oh, it's not on any employment applications, it's on my application. And if you've ever, I do a lot of behavioral health referrals, I just did one today. And that's one of the questions on there. I remember LGBT population, which are transgender, male, female, female. They're on there, they're on the applications. It might not have been any of any that that person has seen, but they're there. And again, changing, I can identify with this group and I can identify with people being marginalized because for years, people told me that I chose to be an addict, that I made a conscious decision to be addicted. Like, you know, I went to my high school guidance counselor and said, "Well, what do you want to be when you graduate? Junkie." You know, that's not how any of that works. And that's not how any of this works for these other people who are impacted by what's going on. You know, I'm hoping that at least one of you will change your mind. I really didn't understand at all what Ms. Kipari said about, well, what if somebody comes to my business and they're threatening me or they're rude or they're obnoxious? But that's not what this is about. This is not.
Still, I would still have a choice of whether I waited or not.
You still would under that case because you're not throwing them out because of the nature of their existence.
Choose that, then I'm discriminating. Amen.
No, you're not. You're completely misunderstanding that. We live in a country where the concept that all men are created equal has always been our promise, but has never yet been our reality. And I'm hoping that locally we can move forward on that and make a difference. And I'm hoping that locally, we can move forward on that and make a difference, because these people are discriminated against, and it needs to change. I can tell you though, and I am a Christian, but the one thing that isn't immutable, is not an immutable trait that we've been discussing, is religion. You know, we're finding out with addiction, science has determined specific parts of the genome and certain alleles that increase the likelihood of somebody being an addict. And, you know, the same things apply to gender orientation. There is nothing in anybody's DNA that makes you a specific religion. You know, it's socialization, it's who your family was, who you were born around, and the decisions you made. That is the, it's not immutable trait. And it should, while it should be respected, it does not need to take precedence over how somebody was born. Thank you.
And then Ron Pitts. Mr. Pitts, still here? Is Ron, is Ron still here?
I am still here, sir. You know, there's a lot of folks here that have talked about how this will affect the church and so on, and I know that for you guys, a lot more of this maybe has to do with how it's going to affect the business community. And so, I was going to talk a little bit more about that. And, you know, four years ago, I was elected to the state senate, and a lot of people I know, because I've talked to them, think that my priorities down there were being pro-life, because I've helped push a lot of that legislation through. I wrote the original draft for amendment one that we just passed. They think I'm super-duper pro-gun, and that's why I got involved in politics. And I am very pro-gun. They think that I went down there to fight for religious freedom, because I fought so hard for the Riffer Act at the state level, or that I fight for free speech, which I regularly do down there. But that's not actually why I went to Charleston, it's not why I got elected, it's not why I went out and campaigned and knocked on doors, it's because I've got eight kids. Okay? And I wanted West Virginia to be a place where when my kids grew up, they would have a future, they would have a job, they would have opportunity, they'd have the ability to start a business, and they'd have the ability to succeed in life, right here, at home in West Virginia. So, that's why I ran. And so, for me, this is more about what does it do for jobs in West Virginia? Okay? Now, I know, Councilman Ryland, you have a restaurant, a nice restaurant.
Thank you.
I travel all over the country, I've never been in a place like what you have. Okay? It's very unique. And I've been in there 200 or 300 times probably, over the last 10, 20 years. I've tried practically every dish, you have one on the menu, they're all great. But here's, here's the thing, you pass this ordinance, okay? And immediately after you pass this ordinance, I come to your restaurant again. And this time, instead of being my normal well-behaved self, I hang out in your bathroom, but not the men's bathroom, I hang out in the ladies' bathroom. With this beard, with this bad haircut, with my grumpy disposition, that's where I hang out. What does that do to your business?
Probably have to ask the ladies.
But you can't ask the ladies, because anybody who says anything to me at that point is you running afoul of this ordinance.
Hello? He's got a point.
Is me in your bathroom going to cause you to lose business?
Yes.
Yep.
No.
You think?
No.
I guarantee it. Because my kids wouldn't be there anymore. This ordinance will cost jobs, it won't help create jobs, because businesses need certainty. They need fairness. I know the woman that Alan was talking about, that's an absolutely true story. True even to the point that she hires lots of people who fit into this model of LGBTQ. Has employees all over the state of West Virginia that fit into that. And yet, this is what happened to her. Not because she's discriminatory, but because somebody decided to hold a grudge. And this is somewhat what you're talking about, Councilman Kepary, which is, it doesn't really matter why you fire them, they have an excuse ready-made. That's what it's about. Now, I've dealt with Andrew Snyder for four years. I can tell you, this guy is not out there fighting the good fight that these people want the other side of this issue thing. Every single year, he comes up with new legislation that can only be defined as anti-Christian. Every single piece, every single time. That's his business. Now, how good is that for this community if Christians start to feel unwelcome? Because this is going to make them feel unwelcome. Councilman, although, you said you didn't want to judge anybody.
I don't.
I believe you.
And I'm tired.
I believe that too, because I think everybody is.
We handle these carefully, I'm very tired.
Here's the thing, this ordinance judges people.
I know it does.
By definition, it judges them, and it finds them wanting. And it does that with one group of people. Okay? One group of people. And I'll tell you, the ultimate proof of this, somebody brought up the question of would Fairness West Virginia hire Christians, right? Well, they hired the right kind of Christians. Would they hire Kayden Cowherd?
Nope. I would.
You would? Would Fairness West Virginia hire Kayden Cowherd to show up at meetings like this and give the speech that he just gave in support of ordinances like this?
I'd rather have him spunk off.
That may be the case. But who's going to go against Fairness West Virginia? Nobody. Because Christians, Kayden doesn't want to work for them. It's not his cause, okay? Now, me, I've got employees in four states. I couldn't tell you how many of them are gay, how many of them are straight, I don't really know, it doesn't really matter to me. You know I hire people? I hire them to get a job done. That's the only reason I hire them. If they get the job done, the job gets done. If it doesn't get done, then I got a problem. Okay? That's the only reason I hire, it's the only reason I fire. Okay? Now, I've got a business north of town and a business south of town, here in West Virginia. And it's not a big business, it's storage facilities, okay? Now, do you know how many gay people rent from me? Because I don't know. Do you know what matters to me in the storage rental business? Do they pay everyone? That's the only thing I care about. If you don't pay, I don't care if you're the best Christian, and if you do pay, I don't care what you are. I, I don't like throwing anybody out, I hate throwing people out. I hate seeing people's mementos and their little family treasures and all of that, but at the end of the day, I'm in a business, I've got a mortgage to pay on that business, I've got to worry about getting the grass cut at those businesses, and I just don't have time to worry about whether or not somebody is gay, or straight, or black, or white, it doesn't really matter to me. Okay? So, when I have to start worrying about that? When you take the lady that Alan's talking about, okay? And you start putting together a patchwork quilt around the state of West Virginia, this ordinance here, that ordinance there, she has to start complying with all these different ordinances. What is she going to do? Now, I think we just heard by implication, somebody who was thinking about relocating to Buchanan is maybe rethinking whether or not he's going to relocate to Buchanan, or open a location in Buchanan. Why? Because he's going to have to deal with this. Okay? There's jobs going right out the door.
Yep.
Okay? That's why I got involved, is jobs going right out the door, because that's what we had for 80 years, jobs going right out the door, our kids going right out the door, everybody leaving this state. Not because we discriminated or didn't discriminate, nobody cared about that.
There weren't jobs.
Four years ago, things turned around. Now, we're creating jobs by the thousands. Last year, 5,000 jobs, the year before that, 5,000 jobs. That's why I got involved in this, that's why I did it, no other reason. And what I see with this happening right here is a stunting of what we've been doing. People saying, "Wait a minute, is it safe to do business in West Virginia?" When they start hearing about multi-hundred thousand dollar losses, is it safe to do business in West Virginia? The answer is going to be no. Or not in Buchanan. You know, what does it do to your restaurant? This ordinance passes, people don't feel like their kids are necessarily safe in your restroom, because suddenly you get a reputation that there's some strange characters hanging out there. But there's restaurants around here that aren't in the city of Buchanan. What does that do to your business? Or maybe they just don't live here at all. Maybe they don't come get their haircut. This is an anti-jobs ordinance. It's not going to help, it's not going to help Buchanan, it's not going to help Up Tr County, it's not going to help this area. And I want to urge you to not think about this more, kill it dead. Kill it dead.
Ron, you still here? There you are.
Yes, I'm still here, sir. I can't even... All of us are still in Morgantown, so I'm still here. I applaud the four of you that have come out strongly against this. I grew up here, I'm a resident today of 73 years in Buchanan. Birthday, Steve. It's my birthday today. No, don't do that. When I went to high school, I graduated in 1963, we had three or four, I hate to use the word colored families, but that's what we called them back then, colored families that were residents and went to our school. Most of us didn't know the difference between black and white, because they were there with us from birth till all the way through high school, and then once we got out of high school and the college, that's when we learned that what, what it was, we, prejudice. And I hate that word too, I hate to be prejudiced. I love everybody. I even love you guys, I may not like you very much, but I love you, you know? And I think this is a bad thing for Buchanan, I, I don't know why you didn't write a law that just didn't mention anybody and, and just say, "We do not discriminate against anybody," and that's it. Why bring people out into the, to the open, to the forefront? What about, what about the one-eyed Cherokee Indian that has a three-legged horse? Let's have, let's have him into this ordinance too, you know? It's, it's kind of ridiculous. And, Mr. Mayor, I normally support all the things you do in Buchanan, but I think this one's really harmful, and that's all I've got to say.
Oh, my goodness.
For anybody else that failed to, that failed to recognize it, wanted to address the council, I think I got all the yeses. Does anybody?
Strodager?
Strodager. You put no, but that's okay, if you want to be a yes.
No, I don't think I put no, maybe that's a new nickname.
He didn't have anything next to him.
You didn't put any.
Let's just vote.
I stand corrected. If you wish to speak, you...
Well, no, if you, if you're tired and you don't want to...
I think everybody's tired, but we should let you speak.
Make it short.
What's that, Mary?
I said, "Make it short, you're going to have to drive me home."
I think at this point, that's, would be a good decision.
I'll drive you.
This, this kind of quickly, I think, perhaps to just summarize my impressions, I was prepared to speak about my personal experience of working with a company that applied for a license that required a diversity applicant, part of their application, which was about a 46-page document, and required a significant amount of work. And I was so surprised to discover when I did that investigation and research in P. which was about two years ago, that contrary to this world, I mean, this is really an interesting experience for me, because the last five years, I've worked in the Washington, DC area. I go there, and I walk, I've worked various capacities, different companies, and that's sort of the melting pot of the world up there, you know? You meet people, I mean, the people you work with are of all nationalities, all religions, all different sexual preferences, I mean, it's just a different, this issue, of course, doesn't, doesn't exist there. But when I, when I looked and discovered that statistics, and this was compiled by the 31st largest company in the United States, it's a very, very large management firm, did the, the kind of major work and the most, most quoted work on diversity and its effectiveness on communities, it was very clear that diversity is the kernel and the impetus to innovation. And it's, and it's the, the top third of all businesses in the United States that have the highest degree of diversity represented in their workplace, actually have the highest financial output. So, they're, and successful. I'm being tired too. The, I think it's, my impression from listening, once again, is that I hope that this council, once again, I'm sort of a strange situation to be in, to hear a vote taking place before all this discussion, because it is sort of like, what, what, what are we here for? I'm not sure we're going to influence people as wise as the six of you, but it seems like it would be worth some sort of discussion, there's so many claims and counterclaims, and what's a real input and what's a real impetus of this, of this ordinance that you're putting out there? I think there's a lot, it sounds like there's a lot of misunderstanding. And I also want to say one last thing, and that is, to me, this is a barometer of where we are as a community with inclusiveness. This is, you know, I think one person said, "We hope you'll revisit it later," I mean, like any social justice issue, this is, through time, perhaps our community will rise the occasion, maybe it's the way that the ordinance has been written that needs to be revisited, I don't really know, but I just would say that this, to me, is a barometer of where we are, and I hope that discussion will continue in the future. And at this point in time, thank you for your time.
Does anybody else who wanted to address the council that...
Sir, I may. I don't know, there was a list assigned.
Oh, sure.
There's just a couple things. You know, what's, I'm sorry, what's your name? My name's Rob. Rob Allen. And, you know, I've listened to all this stuff, I want to say, first thing, it's great that we're in America, where we can come here and have this debate. You know, not too long ago, a person would have been beat down just for saying they chose a certain lifestyle. When I grew up, that was really common, and it was unfortunate, and I think that's what's led to a lot of the push for, for changes that we're seeing now. But, you know, at the same time, there's Christians being burned alive for claiming to be Christians. So, there's persecution on both sides, I think we could agree to that. Have I experienced that as a Christian? No, nobody's threatened to burn me. Some people have been really rude and hated me for my beliefs. But, secondly, I just want to apologize for jumping in early on, Mr. Mayor, I really wasn't accustomed to the process there, and so, if I ever come to one of these again, I'll wait till the end to talk. So, I do apologize for that. You know, just a couple takeaways. I really appreciate the two folks that really took the time, or several folks, to clarify the church's concern and what your purpose is. And, you know, when I say that, I think there's some people from the LGBTQ community that have genuinely good intentions. However, I believe there's other folks with agendas, and that's why we see lawsuits against creatures that don't want to marry a couple, or a cake company that doesn't want to provide a cake for your wedding. You know, me personally, if I own a restaurant, I'm going to serve you. If I own a catering restaurant, and you ask me to, to provide a meal for your, your wedding, I'd have to tell you no. And he kind of alluded to why, as a Christian, I believe those things, and I should have that right, you know? Just like you can go to another place and grab it, and do that somewhere else. But, you know, I really got a question of why the city council's getting into wanting to regulate this kind of stuff. I always looked at it more as, as the function of the, the community, and that may be my ignorance of what your purpose is, but I don't really understand that. You know, one of the folks was saying, "All these happen, like the, these events or signs and stuff promoting that community." All that stuff has happened without this ordinance. So, to me, that already says there's people in the community that welcome that lifestyle. You know, I get made fun because I'm a Christian, and you're going to be persecuted because of your lifestyle choices. But, I don't think the city needs to regulate that, and I don't think I should be not denied my beliefs any more than what you want to choose. I see a couple people smiling at me, so they either think I'm ridiculous or whatever, but that's okay. You know, it's not easy being a Christian, I do.
That's right.
And I say that because of what I've... And I say that because of what I've received at times talking, and I don't randomly choose people from the LGBT community to go, "Oh, your lifestyle." You know, for me, I'm gonna get to know a person, at some time, it'll come up in a conversation, and we'll discuss it. And my thing would be, as a Christian, I'd say, "Are you a Christian?" If you say you are, then, then I would have to approach you, what you read in the Bible that makes you think that lifestyle is a sin. Just as the same as if it's a guy cheating on his wife, or a father not providing for his family. To me, it'd be no difference. If we were friends, and you stated you were a Christian, I would have to come to you with that, I'm required to come with you with that, and I hope you would do the same for what sin I had in my life. So, you know, I'm sorry for your experiences with rude people, we have them too, and, you know, we may not be beat up in our community for it, but there are people that are beat up for it. And I think as a Christian, I will always stand up and tell you, "I don't believe in what you're doing," and I'll tell you it's a sin, and it's no different than me telling my son, if he's reaching out for a hot pan, I'd tell him, "Don't do that, you'll get hurt." It's because I care about him. And when you hear a lot of these preachers saying, "I care about you, I love you," it's because they do. They may not like your lifestyle, but it's no different than any other sin within the church, and they should address that, okay? I hear a lot of people calling themselves Christians, I've had to evaluate myself, call myself a Christian since the time of my life, I think that there's a lot of people that say I'm a Christian, and they're nowhere close, you know? Get in your Bible, that's the only way you're gonna know, is get in your Bible, read it yourself, don't go on with all these prescriptions of people. Yeah, you know, if you were gonna come to a church by a tent, sure, come on in, you know, but don't ask me to marry you. I'm not a preacher, but I'm saying, if I was a church preacher, I'd say, "Don't ask me to marry you," because if you're in my church, and you want to be part of my church, and you stand on what the church believes, then you either wouldn't be there, or you'd be repenting and trying to change your lifestyle. Same thing as an addict, or a child molester, or a father that doesn't provide for his family or anything like that, so, but that's kind of a thing that, if you're not a Christian, and we come at you and say all these Christian things, you could care less because you won't understand where we're coming from. That's not your fault. So if I asked you if you're a Christian, and you said no, then we would approach it a different way. But anyways, again, I just don't know why the city council would choose to go after this type of ordinance. I'd say it's very unfortunate, I talked to the gentleman earlier about being persecuted in the community, and he said he had been, and, you know, that's terrible. But I don't think it's the city's council's job to legislate that, I think there's laws, regulations out there to do that for. Anyways, I do appreciate everybody's time, I know it's late, but, yeah, just some takeaways, things to consider. Thank you.
Andy Snyder.
Andy Snyder.
I would like to speak as a former business owner of Buchanan, I know everybody's tired of me too, but I just, I want to talk about the mechanics of this real quick, so I kind of have a concern and question. You know, I owned a heating cooling company here in town and sold it to Buchanan and Southern States, and I now run that for them. When I had my business, you know, I held the right to refuse service to whoever I deemed, not meaning discrimination, but for example, I had a lady call me one time, and, you know, and as soon as I answered the phone, she started cussing me because I didn't answer the phone soon enough, and I told her that I didn't have time to help her. I'm scrutinized all the time because I may not return a phone call, or we may be too busy, because if any of you are familiar with the heating cooling world, we are very overwhelmed, a lot, and there's not enough of us to go around. So my, my question is, this lady that cussed me, you know, if I refused to work on her furnace, and suddenly she decides to make the claim that I refused service to her for whatever reason, you can fill in the blank with whatever you want, where does that go first? Who, who makes that determination whether that is a fine or that is a legitimate cause?
Do you think a complaint is filed against you? Based upon all of the other protected classes that already exist?
Yeah, based upon.
Race, or ethnicity, or age, or handicap?
Correct.
If it's through the state, it would be through the West Virginia Human Rights Commission.
But I mean, I mean under this city ordinance.
The, the complaint would be filed with the mayor and immediately referred to the city attorney for investigation, and if the city attorney determines from the investigation that there should be an action brought that it cannot be conciliated, then he would file it with the municipal court.
And same goes for any employees, because I agree with Mr. Carnes, you know, when we, when we hire people, it's about them doing their duty. You know, I'm not gonna stand up here and try to convince anybody of their persuasion because I think everybody in here's kind of clearly drawn their lines, but just the mechanics of this, you know, if I hire a person, and we see this down there at the store all the time, we had a young lady down there not too long ago that was fired for negligence and not doing her job. Her immediate claim was she was fired because of being a woman. This, this, I'm afraid that this will give a weapon to anyone who deems it discrimination. So I don't feel that this ordinance is beneficial to the businesses and to Buchanan. You can't, you can't force people to have manners, to be people. We live in a culture where, you know, there is a lot of hate, there is a lot of anger, there's a lot of division. There's a lot of division among the Christian churches, nobody can deny that. I don't share the same beliefs as everybody in here, but you can't force that by law, you can't force that by an ordinance. I understand the good that they're trying to do with creating this to put everybody on an equal playing field, but we're simply not. You know, I was, had a lady from the state who had me employ a boy, it was a program where they tried to find employment for people who could not get employment. He probably, just guessing, probably was over 400 pounds. Our work is done in crawl spaces and attics, and when I employed the boy, because I'm not prejudiced, I don't discriminate, but when I brought him to work, the very first job we did was in an attic. When he went up the step ladder, he folded it up, and let alone that when he got into the attic, he cracked the drywall and everything in there just sheerly because of his size. So upon evaluation, you know, a couple weeks later, I told her, I said, "I, you know, I can't, I just can't employ him because of his size, because he's unable to get into the spaces that we're in, he's unable to..." What's to say that, you know, that he could not file a suit against me because he was obese, or whatever you want to fill that in with? I think then that comes down to you and the attorney, and I don't think that's fair for Buchanan.
Under the current ordinance, just to be clear, the mayor is simply a repository for complaints that immediately refers it to the city attorney. The Fairness West Virginia template had the matter being filed directly with, like, the city attorney, and that didn't seem to be right for us. So that's the only reason that that was added, is there's an elected official that receives the complaint and then makes sure that it's investigated.
But it just, it just seems that that is our culture now. Every time somebody is fired or evicted, I fired my own cousin because he was taking drugs, and he threatened my wife. Do we not hold those policies? I mean, we hold a drug-free policy, and this guy, you know, that has a substance abuse, I understand, but am I doing right by allowing him to use drugs on company time and to be in certain houses? I'm just afraid that this ordinance is going to weaponize different things that may deem this discrimination.
Thanks, Mr. Snyder. Okay, did anybody else?
I just want to say one quick statement, and that is that I didn't want to say this until I got complete verification, but I just want to say be careful who you listen to, because the Family Policy Council that's here with us this evening, their parent group is called Family Research Center, they're actually considered a hate group by the Southern Poverty Law Center, so take that as...
Okay, I would like to say, the Fairness West Virginia is also a hate group that chastises Christians throughout the state of West Virginia, they've tried to destroy all of my advertisers through the radio show that I produce, so the same thing would apply to them regarding Christianity. Thank you.
Mayor, it's after 11 o'clock, I think we've heard both sides, I'd like to motion that we vote.
We've talked about it for three hours. The motion is on the table, we've had thorough discussion, the minutes were reflect that we've had thorough discussion. We're calling for the question. All those in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Aye. It's very close, but I think it's 4-3, the nays, so let's do the roll call vote. Mary Albom?
Yes.
Mr. Skinner?
No.
Mr. Rigger?
No.
Mr. Rylands?
Yes.
Pam Capery?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
And the mayor votes yes, the measure fails 4-3. So.
I would say this in conclusion, let's be very careful about labels. You know, there's this tendency that we think folks are Democrats or Republicans, or that they're from the right or from the left, and you all might not know this about me, but I'm a lifelong Republican, I'm a Methodist, I support the Second Amendment, I support the death penalty, I'm a bit of a hawk instead of a dove, so I would be one of those guys that like bomb places before you should, but I still believe that all people have fundamental rights, and I'm gonna continue personally to recognize everybody regardless as to who they are. I don't care about their race, or their gender, or their religion, or their orientation, we're gonna treat everybody fairly.
So are we, just wanted to know that, so are we.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all for coming.
We'll take a two-minute break and let everybody leave, and then we'll do the final comments of council. You're welcome to stay for that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's resume our council meeting, put a wrap on this, guys, it's already after 11. Okay, comments and announcements of council members, Mary Albom?
Goodnight, everyone.
Pam Capery?
I just want to say that everybody has to be responsible for their actions, for the way they treat people, and it all comes down to that, no matter what color we are, race, anything, and it goes toward us also, for our beliefs.
Mr. Rylands?
Now, these are difficult discussions to have, for the most part, it's been a civil discourse this evening, and I think our path of ascension as a community over the last 10 years has been founded on working together in the best interest of the community, and what individuals felt was in the best interest of the community. So it's my hope that we put this one in the books, we've made a decision, and let's move forward together and not let this hinder our further ascension as a community, and try to respect each other's positions and be able to talk about it. You know, that's, a lot of places can't have conversations about difficult things, so if we're able to do that, I think that's to our benefit, and to respect everyone else's, everyone's opinions, and to move forward together, that's, that's something to aspire to. So I think, you know, this has been a positive thing, although it's been rather tenuous, but.
Don't talk.
I, you know, I facilitate a lot of conversations with diverse people and diverse ideas and thoughts, and anytime you come face-to-face with another human being and you're able to stand on your foundation and advocate for your positions, everyone benefits. So I hope that the takeaway here is that we're all different, but we're all the same, and we're, we're in this together, and hopefully that's, that's the way we start out tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Mr. Skinner?
I wholeheartedly agree with CJ, and I have, I have no further comments.
Mr. Thomas?
I agree with what CJ said also.
And so do I, Mayor, sorry.
Man, I got a trifecta there.
One really, one really pleasant surprise this evening was when Wenda said that Sarah Finchman had written a note. Many of you probably don't know this, but Sarah, her senior year at college, lived with me in my apartment, and I've done that for about seven or eight students, I don't charge them anything, they get room and board free. But she is a phenomenally young lady, and she played basketball, I think it was Pepper County where she played, but, oh geez, Valley, but the, she has two sisters that are heroin addicts, and one baby was born eight months ago, and was, as Wenda said, was, had four different addictions and so forth. She's going to be adopting both of those young children, one's a boy, one's a girl, and she works for the state in discrimination and sexual harassment and so forth, but she's a Wesleyan grad, and gosh, we have wonderful people. She's an LBGt, just a fine young lady. I enjoyed this evening, I don't watch TV, obviously, and I listen to all the discussions very carefully, and it's a learning process, I think it's a process we'll probably be taking up again someday in the future. Thank you, all be safe.
Thanks, Jay. Mr. Rigger?
I just want to thank everyone for remaining, the opinions were obviously very strong on both sides, and I still like Maggie's, and I still like the people in this room that I disagreed with tonight, and I hope that we can all wake up tomorrow and keep doing our thing together, and.
Yes.
I'm still gonna eat at CJ Maggie's, and I'm still gonna buy the mayor a beer and try to get him to sing karaoke, and, and I hope that, you know, we can continue forward as a community with all the other wonderful things that we're doing, so, that's all.
Well, first off, the most important thing I got to say tonight is, early voting starts tomorrow for the school levy.
Oh, that's right.
If you're inclined to vote for the levy, you should vote by January 19th. If you're gonna vote against the levy, you vote on February 19th. That's a little joke, but, you know, this is 36 years for me association with the city, and this isn't the first controversial thing that we've taken up, and I guarantee you, it won't be the last. Two years ago, it was the brunch bill, and there were a handful of people who came to every meeting that we talked about the brunch bill, and they thought, you would have thought we were ripping their arms and legs off when we passed that thing. And there's not been a single incident with people buying a beer at 11 o'clock on a Sunday morning since that happened, and that's the fact of the matter. And then we had the drug house ordinance a few months ago, and that was, everybody was in an uproar over that.
Joe, just me.
There's not been a single citation issued under that thing, it's not a big deal. We'll get past this. I think there was value to having this exercise. We heard from a lot of folks, and we understand each other better than we did before, and as long as we have civil discourse in a form that accords everyone the right to be heard, that's first and foremost what it's about. So, seems like I was gonna say something else, but I'm so darn tired, I can't remember what it was. I would entertain a motion.
Motion second.
Motion second was standing down, 11:14.